Our Father, who art in heaven, as body and congregating as council chambers, pray for thy fine guidance, that we all may do all things well, according to thy holy will. Amen.
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buntzel.
Here.
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mr. Geraci.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. DiNardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
All members present, item E, amendment of agenda, I have several requests to amend the agenda. And item F, we are going to add the December 10th, 2019 minutes, and we're going to remove the January 1st, 2020 minutes. And if you will move down to J, it looks like we have the number one and two stuck there together. Forgive me, I didn't catch that, so you'll have one, two, three, four, and five. So it'll be J1, J2, J3, J4. Mr. Thompson.
If we amend the agenda as stated.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, may I have a second? Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buntzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes. All members present, motion passes seven to the court. Item G, request to address council on agenda items, and I have four requests this evening. When I call your name, please come forward to the microphone, you have five minutes to speak, please state your name and your address, and first is Jennifer Pence.
I have some photographs of flooding on Elm Avenue, the dates are on the back of everything, there are several dates included, so if you'd like to take a look at those. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Pence, and I live at 1940 Elm Avenue. I've been a resident of Norwood for 41 years. A majority of those years have been spent on Elm Avenue. My parents bought their house on Elm, near the corner of Franklin, in 1977. I'm sorry. For years, I was terrified of thunderstorms because it meant that it was likely that our yard and our basement would get flooded again. My dad would always double-check the sump pumps and make sure they were working, so he could at least try to keep the amount of water in the basement at bay. First, it would come up through the drain, and if the water got high enough outside, it would come in over the foundation of our home. I can remember my dad and my brothers trying to carry our washer and dryer out of the basement several times as it was being flooded. I remember watching my neighborhood friends swim and play in the floodwaters, and being angry at my dad because I wasn't allowed to join them, which, as an adult, I now understand why, and I have since thanked him for that. I've watched countless cars try to drive through the waters and become stranded, I've seen the manhole covers pop open with the force of the water coming up from underneath. It's honestly a miracle that none of the neighborhood children who played in those floodwaters have fallen down those holes. There's been many floods over the years, more times than I can count, and the issue has gotten worse in recent years, and is now affecting other parts of the city as well. July 18th, 2001, the same flood that killed two people in Fairfax, this was the first time my parents' basement became completely filled to the rafters. The pumps were no use, the water was coming in faster than the pump could send it back out. I remember getting that call from my parents, saying their basement was filling up, and I remember my ex-husband and I coming down Maple Avenue and jumping our back fence to get into the house to help my mom and dad. Fast forward to August 28th, 2016, the basement was once again filled to the rafters, only this time, it also came in the front, side, and back doors, and there was six inches of sewer water in the first floor of their home. As you can see in the photos I've provided, the walls had to be cut into about two and a half feet high to help prevent mold from spreading. The carpet and underlying hardwood floor had to be ripped up, was temporarily replaced with plywood. The kitchen was also a total loss, the lower cabinets, all appliances had significant water damage. The furnace, AC, washer and dryer, water heater also had to be completely replaced because they were completely submerged. At the time, I was living across the street from my parents, as the floodwaters grew higher and higher, all I could do was watch in horror while talking to my dad on the phone. As the water started coming through their front door, they were both 80 years old at the time, and they went up to the second floor not knowing how high the water was going to get in their first floor. Several neighbors were trying to help me make sure that my parents were okay, and as soon as the rain started to let up, my ex-husband and the next-door neighbor's son-in-law waded through the floodwaters with me, and they piggybacked my parents to safety over at my house. The next days were spent ripping up soggy carpet, padding, and cleaning, and trying to see what could be salvaged. Due to the extensive damage to their home, my parents spent the next two years living with me in my home while we waited on MSD to settle our claim, which, by the way, was lost twice. Do you have any idea how hard it is on elderly people when they're displaced from their home, a home that they've lived in for 40 years? Because I do. The news stations pegged this as a 100-year storm or flood. Frankly, for us, no, it wasn't. The residents of Elm have been dealing, excuse me, the residents of Elm have been dealing with this for years, whenever it rains, a little harder than normal, and it has little to do with what's on top of the sewer grates but what lies beneath. This past summer, on July 17th, just 10 days after my mother passed away, we were dealing with another flood. I rushed home from work to check on my dad and make sure the basement was okay, and when I got there, some of our wonderful Norwood firefighters were there doing welfare checks on the residents. We got lucky that time, no damage in the basement. On July 30th, however, I had to rush home again from work because friends started calling me because the water was coming up. To get to the house, I waded through water that was almost up to my waist, to find that water was pouring into our basement. Our water heater that was just replaced in 2016 was ruined. This wasn't something I needed to be dealing with after burying my mother a few weeks prior. This past Saturday, I spent my day at home with my dad, waiting on the rains they were predicting, to make sure that it didn't happen again, which they thankfully passed us by for the most part. It's horrible to think the worst every time the weather report calls for rain, and it's horrible to watch your 83-year-old father worry that his house is going to be flooded every time they mention rain. I am asking you, please, do something to help our neighborhood, we shouldn't have to keep going through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robin.
This is Robin Childers. Please state your name and address.
I'm Robin Childers, I live at 1946 Elm Avenue, I've been there probably since 2005, maybe. The flood we had in 16, I lost my husband five days later. Because every day, he was out there trying to help to clean up after the flood. And every time it floods... I'm sorry. I think to him, but we lost a lot of stuff as well. Unlike her, we were never reimbursed for anything that we lost because they lost our claim. My husband made sure that he found one, but since everything is lost, we never got to recover anything. I have a minivan that my husband purchased for me for my birthday, just sitting out in front of my house. It ran before the flood in 16, it got flooded in 16, we got it started, but because it keeps flooding, it no longer runs. There's nothing I can do with it, I keep it for insurance purposes. But, like she said, it's sad that we have to keep dealing with these floods, and every time it floods, I video it and I laugh to keep from crying, because it brings back too many memories. My porch is... This is my porch, this is what happened to my porch after the flood in 16. Insurance policy won't fix it because they said it's not from a disaster. I just hope that you all can do something about this, because we shouldn't have to keep living like this. Feces water, it's unhealthy for one, and why, I mean, when I go out to move the van that is running, by the time I get from here to across the street and coming back, I have to wait, because I can't cross the street, it's too high for me to just go from here to there, in a van, I can't walk back, I have to wait. Something needs to be done.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Daryl Harden. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name's Daryl Harden, our business address is 1936 Elm Avenue in Norwood, right at the intersection of Elm and Franklin. We've been in that building now, we bought it about 23 years ago on land contract, and in 2001, we had the first serious flood, we had water about a foot deep in the building, we lost most everything in the interior, all the contents, and fortunately, they were covered. And the insurers came over, wrote us a check, we replaced the contents. The one thing that wasn't covered was the computers, we had, desk space was at a premium at that time, and we had our towers on the ground, and we lost all of that and all of our data, which was a big problem, and it's hard to recover. Fortunately, fortunately, City of Norwood supplied us with a nice dumpster, and all the neighbors carried and drug and cried their belongings to the dumpster, which is where we put all of our files. Called the IRS and said, "What do I do, all my files are flooded?" And they said, "Put them in storage." And I laughed a little bit. But it's flooded many times since then, and the next flood that we had, it was of significant value, was the one we just had three years ago in 2016 in August. The MSD, I guess it was, supplied us with some help, we cleaned out everything that was in the building, I got some help, and most of the time, the big ones are coming at night, so we have some firefighter families and family members, and we hauled them out in the backyard. Somebody came and hauled that stuff away, they pulled up the subfloor, dried and sanitized underneath, cut all the walls out two feet high, and we filed a claim with MSD, and they said, "Well, we'd be glad to pay you," and we lost four vehicles in that flood, they came and towed them away, which hindered our ability to do business. So it's been a never-ending battle. Anyway, MSD said, "Yeah, we'll honor your claim, we'll pay you enough money to put down new flooring, and we'll put up your drywall again, and we'll be glad to do that for you," which doesn't solve the problem, but by signing the agreement to have them do that, the agreement says that I will never file another claim for floods with MSD. So that's crazy, because it floods there almost every year, not all the time that bad. But our building has a raised subfloor, it's about a foot high. When the flood comes, and it doesn't come inside the building, and it fills up the underside, and the problem is, is our foundation is washing out, and the building is, I would say, a couple more floods, it's going to collapse, it's very, very, I would call it wrecked, and it's not going to be there very much longer. So we called an attorney, and he said, "Okay, I'll look at it for you," we gave him a retainer three years later. I said, "You haven't done anything, have you?" "No." "I'm sorry, I've neglected," so, "Okay, have my retainer back." Got another attorney, and he says, "I know why." Says he called the MSD, and they want a, the first thing that they want is a engineer's report on the condition of the building. Every engineer I called asked, "Why do you want this, and what's the problem?" And I told them, and they said, "No, thanks, I'm not interested," I guess they didn't want to fight MSD's attorneys, don't know. So my attorney investigated it, and he says, "Well, here's the problem, the problem is, MSD is mandated by the federal government to solve problems that they have created or have not resolved, and anything in court has to go through federal court, which is evidently a big deal." So here I sit, my business is 30, 1982, what was that, 38 years old this year, and I'm 68 years old, will soon be 69, my wife is 68, we want to retire someday. I didn't tell anybody that. Oh, I'm sorry. At any rate, we want to retire, and we can do that, we could do that today, if I could sell my business and the building, and I could pay off some apartments that we own, and I could pay off the house that we live in, however, I can't sell the building. It's unsellable, as you can imagine, I can't, I'd have to disclose the flood problems, and they see the condition of the building as it gradually gets worse. There's cracks in the walls, and every time it floods, they get a little bigger, we have to patch them again. It's really, it's really, really distressing, very distressful. I don't know what to do at this point, I guess I'm going to die working out of that building, I don't know, but something needs to be done. Heck, the street, this last flood, the street has patches on top of patches, and this last flood, for some reason, removed all of the patches, and we had holes in that street half as big as a car. Some of them are fixed, and we have some small ones about this big that are still all over that street. And I think it's got to be the worst street in Norwood, other than Montgomery Road. It's a mess, too. But there's some neglect going on here, I don't know what the solution is, I'm asking. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We have one additional resident that would like to speak on an agenda item, Pastor Sonny James. Please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening, Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue in the great city of Norwood, Ohio. First, my heart to those that are on Elm and other cities and our, or other streets in our fine city. One of the things that I think our priority as we move forward as a city and as a people is to really look at the infrastructure top-down, and as we address budget issues and budget concerns, I know that one of our real tough areas is the expenses and finances of our city, and we understand that, but as we press forward, one of the challenges that I really want to address with you, those that really go out of their way to make our community safe, those that put their life on the line when most residents are at home sleeping comfortable, I know that personally, over just the last year and a half, I personally, in the middle of the night, have gone out to over eight calls where our firefighters have had to respond. I remember a few years back, I got called by residents, and there on Sherman Avenue, near our convenience store, people were jumping out of the building because it was on fire, yet we had firefighters standing there on that ladder, and I remember one even fell off because it was so intense. Folks, I know as you have a lot to govern over, I know you have some tough decisions to make in 2020, and I respect that, but I'm asking, and I'm encouraging you to please put at the top of your agenda the issues that concern the people that serve this fine community, because without that, and without those individuals willing to come to the table and really step forward, it makes us compromise, because we've got folks that have spent years in our community, and I'm going to encourage you to really dig deep when we talk about our finances and our budget issues, our firefighters, those that desire to head the fire department, that really sacrificed for us. They put their lives on the line, not just being out on the fire, but managing those who go out on that limb, so please, keep them in our prayers, as we keep all of you in our prayers, that we work together as a family and as one people to continue to make this community even greater. So my hat's off to the firefighters and to those leaders that come before council to say, "Hey, I'm willing to lead, and I'm willing to lead these people that are willing to put their lives on the line, but when it comes to compensation and budgets, please let's compensate them fairly, adequately, according to the standard of the industry." God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, item H, reports of standing committees of council, item one, finance, budget, and audit committee, Mr. DiNardo.
Thanks everyone for speaking. Before I kind of begin, it's interesting, the finance committee, I think, as a group, we're constantly trying to weigh up, not just the ordinance in front of us, but a process where we look at the expenditures around our staffing and our people, and the expenditures around capital improvements for our city. And obviously, those things are in conflict, but they're both draws on our budget, and so that balance you're talking about, that's exactly what we're trying to do, I think that's going to be a process over a long time, but that's on the forefront of how we approach our finances. So, the finance committee met last Friday and a half, you know, two Fridays ago, and I'm going to go kind of in reverse order for those who weren't able to watch it. The last thing we talked about was current claims against the city of Norwood, we had the law department, Keith and Tim, they came and attended the meeting and helped us understand the current state of play, which I wouldn't call a process as much as just the claims that exist. A lot of them were around potholes and kind of claims that where people wanted to address those potholes. And it was kind of pretty clear to me and to other members of that committee that the process didn't really exist and probably needs to. We threw out a couple different ways to go about that, some, they arranged some from having council go one by one through those claims and study them and vote their merit. Another one was create a threshold and give some autonomy to the law department. We'll go back as a committee and come up with a couple options and discuss them, it was just more for us as a committee and for you as a people to understand that, you know, there are claims against the city, and we're trying to figure out the right way to handle them, that, again, balance is, I guess, the key word, that balances the time and attention that is warranted with the fact that there is a liability, a potential liability, you know, staring at us, and we got to address that. Then, the auditor, Jim Stith, provided a 2019 year interview, a lot of that information is on the website, he likes to remind us of that, and hopefully, you guys feel encouraged to go check it out. I won't go into it here because it's a long, that would be a meeting in and of itself. And then the last thing that took a substantial amount of time, that was kind of the reason that we met, we as a finance committee met so quickly, was to look over two of these ordinances, two of the ordinances that were presented on the January 1st special meeting, and they both had to do with salary range increases, and a few of them were position, creating new positions, and modifying some of the positions that existed. That conversation at the finance committee was really around bringing in some of the suggestions that were discussed at the special committee, for example, Mr. Thompson talked about 15 out, making the lower end of the range of an eight-hour employees at $15, rather than like, I think, $13.42 was the lowest one. Some of that ability for a hiring manager to negotiate within 5%, at the time, I think it was written 10, we moved that down to 5%, and that sort of made sense to us, because we were saying, you know, if I'm a hiring manager, I want the ability to at least have 5% of negotiating power without having to go back to council every time I want to, you know, go up $2. And so there were about six or seven, if I remember, kind of potential changes that we wanted to brought forward, and we settled on two modified ordinances that you'll see on the agenda here. One looks heck of a lot, a lot like the one that was submitted on January 1st, being changes to the executive assistant, creating the two assistant administrative positions, and then increasing the salary range for the safety service director. To note, both in finance committee and in the special meeting, that was something that seemed like generally the council was on board with, I heard two different council members say as much. Then we talked about the, what at the time was B, and that was bringing all of the administrative positions and other department positions into a single combined ordinance that effectively re-looked at all the salary ranges that were on the docket. And so as we've kind of talked through that, it was pretty clear that rather than just look at the total cost, which Jim threw out a number of $250,000, we went back and examined line by line the following, the following metrics. One, what was the plus or minus, the delta, the variance? One, what was the plus or minus, the delta, the variance between the current estimated 2019 salary, estimated because at the time it wasn't officially closed yet, our books weren't closed, and the proposed rate, the lowest part of the bands that were proposed? So we wanted to plus or minus those. So that's pretty simple math. And, and then you started to bring in non-salary cost impacts. If we remove somebody that had a particular set of employee benefits and replace them with somebody who didn't, that's obviously a net benefit. And if there were legal reasons why a, at least a contractor or part-time employee had to be hired, in the case of, I think, the building commissioner, for example, there are particular certifications that were required and were existing in a part-time, potentially a part-time facility, that was factored into that variance as well. The takeaway, we put together a value proposition for two reasons. One, to allow our council to line by line evaluate each position and understand on its own merit if that made sense, especially if it was a net cost to the city. The number that we came up, that, that, that analysis came up with was $257,000. Actually, it was $255,000. Jim and Keith helped me see that there was a $2,000, about a $2,000 variance in one of the figures. So $255,000 is the net cost of all those changes, by my, by our analysis. $10,000 of that was, and somebody brought up, you brought up, John, about, well, what was the cost of the non-administrative, the department heads that were added after the fact? And that was about, $10,000 was thrown out, that sort of, that worked out to be about $9,000 bucks. So, again, in line with the meeting. And there's kind of two takeaways when you look at this analysis. The first is, as I said, it highlights a process. And that process is something the Finance Committee is gonna take through all expenditures that get presented to them. So you, as a council, couldn't expect, when you bring something to the Finance Committee, this is that line-by-line level of detail that we're gonna come back to you with. Here's what we talked about, here's why we think this, not that. And it allows you to have a tool when you're voting on any ordinance that goes in the future. So I thought that in and of itself was really important that we stressed. The second thing, when you're looking at each one of these lines, some of these haven't been hired yet, and, and some of them have to understand whether they take place in a particular timeframe that is or is not in accordance with a financial recovery plan. Those are almost two different points, because the process in itself is kind of, that, that we wanna highlight is different than some of the actions that we're gonna take or potentially take when we're voting on the ordinances. So just wanted to kind of lay that out there as the type of stuff that we were talking about in the Finance Committee. A last point that we talked about really briefly, and I think should be highlighted as we think about the readings and potential voting on these ordinances. There was a lot of talk, both after the January 1st meeting and actually after the Finance Committee, both directly to me in person, online, a couple of text messages, and I know another council member, because I meant to talk to him about it, was aware of this too. There's a particular look of all the members of council. And that got kind of raised a few times. And when we look at this $255,000 increase, potential increase, net, of course, some of them are benefits, I could also say that these are opportunities. And so the Finance Committee is going to give you the tools to evaluate things on a very cold and factual level. I think council, when we, when we look at these readings, we can kind of say, that's one tool. Are there also opportunities here for department heads, hiring managers, the administration to say, you know, there are a lot of positions right now that aren't filled and could kind of fill some of those gaps that we see in the, the similar look that sits here on council? So, that was Finance Committee, I guess, in a nutshell. I don't know if there's opportunity for us to discuss that, or, yeah.
Sure. Anyone, Mr. Johnson?
So, I guess I'll make a motion to receive and file the report, and then if there's a second, there'll be a discussion, and that would be a good opportunity.
Second by Mr. Gaber? Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, well, I was just making a motion, so.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? Mr. Brayden?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate that, appreciate that. That's, that's a pretty good overlay of the meeting. So just to be clear, the numbers that you gave us are per year. So $9,000, that'd be per year, basically what you, so just, I want to make that clear. That's, that's the first thing I want to do. That concludes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
Okay, the motion? Yeah, I got, I, I was kind of hoping for everything else. So, as I thought through this, I also know that there was almost kind of a, a line in the sand I wanted to, I wanted to make. It was really important to myself and the other members of Finance Committee, who, by the way, should get some recognition, that was, I didn't really know what I was supposed to expect in a Finance Committee. But I found the other three members to be incredibly collaborative, helpful in putting together this analysis. And I think it's a really good, you know, showcase of how we're going to behave as a Finance Committee going forward. So, nice job, guys. Secondly, at about 4:30-ish today, got an email forwarded by our president, sounds like he got the email about three and a half minutes before we did, where the State Otter's Office wanted to make it known that the effect of this $255,000 net increase, in almost all cases, bar leg two, would be outside of the current financial recovery plan. That poses more than a few problems. And I, I kind of, in the hour that I had, both driving here and scarfing down dinner, thought of some options that I wanted to talk about with the rest of the council. It's not that I have an opinion of, or these are in any order, they're just how I wrote them down in a notebook. So, for these salary increases and potential position, create, you know, position creations, if they're outside of the, the current FRP, in my mind, that leaves us three considerations. The first, we could say that all cost increases, and as I said, all but I think, like, a couple of them would be, that were in, not, or out of compliance with the current FRP, could have their wording amended and the ordinance changed to suggest that they go into effect April 1st. Now that would mean that any hires, like, so, kind of the point of, I think, the original mayor's ordinance was set so he could go get these positions hired, that would mean that they'd be hired on the current range at the lowest band, with some 5% wiggle room from that band. It's just important to note that we could do that, but that would mean that you basically would be kind of starting that from April 1st onwards. Why would you want to do that? Because it allows us to have, so let the January 22nd Financial Recovery Commission meeting occur, they could have a discussion on what that would look like, and it allows us to submit a financial recovery plan, potentially with all of these in them. Okay? Option number two, we could hear the readings, potentially vote, potentially press forward, and essentially knowingly be out of compliance with the financial recovery plan. Then, why, why even state that? Because there's almost a question in my mind of, okay, but how, for how long? If the commission is meeting on like, the January 22nd, I don't even know what day that is, and they're gonna note that it's a violation, they're gonna urgently request we review the FRP draft, and we would, we could respond with something to the effect of, well, we're doing that anyway, and fit the first week of February 2020. That's a fact. If we never got this, we'd still be going through a financial recovery plan draft process as council and with the administration. And then there's a third option, I guess, which is some mix of the two, which is maybe we select one or two critical positions that we all either feel very strongly about, or just want to use it as a test. Yeah, I guess it would still be out of the financial recovery plan's compliance, but it would, I guess, maybe be more palatable when the Financial Recovery Commission has their meeting on January 22nd. We're essentially saying, I know, but when you guys are talking about it, we picked the one, we wanted to hear your thoughts, we'll continue that discussion, and we'll, I guess, work towards a financial recovery plan that includes all the rest of the salary ranges and job creations. Those are a few options. I kind of think we should spend, I hope there's some discussion after this, because I think no matter what happens, if we move forward with the readings, if we vote, if we table this again to the Finance Committee, then I, I think that, you know, we should have some discussion on those three options out of even one, so.
Mr. Dracy?
I believe, and Mr. Moore can correct me if I'm wrong, that we, we can amend at least the date to April 1st, which, um, I, I don't think would hurt Mayor Snyder from making his hires before then. I think anybody that would come in would still know that the, that salary range would be there if we voted it in for that April 1st deadline. I, I don't see an issue at least amending the ordinance to create the April 1st timeline.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we know what positions, exact positions, would be, or would not be in violation of the current FRP? So we can talk about that.
I'll respond to that. It's in your packet, I don't know exactly which one, but here, you can have my version. Basically, in my mind, it'd be anything that has a negative mark to it, and that's a very simple, oversimplification of it, because as I said, we got this email like, an hour and a half ago, so I haven't gone through and seen what the financial recovery plan has for some of these positions. The other difficulty in trying to be able to do that is some of these positions are broken out between two different funds. So we'd have to add those up and then see if that increase would put us over on an annual basis. But I think the way I interpreted the email that, that the office sent, she was, it seemed like she was suggesting we couldn't do what Keith was getting at, at the Finance Committee, where we say, well, if it's only divided by so many pay periods, then in and of itself, those two months aren't gonna be over. She was saying if you create the, it seemed like she was saying if you extend the salary range, then today, you're out of compliance. And it doesn't really matter if you catch up or try to make it up in the financial recovery plan over the other 10 months. So, I'm very, very simply saying, if it has a negative next to it, you're probably, it's a good guess that it's out, would be out of compliance. I just actually haven't done the math, because we just got it. So, it only partially answers your question.
Mr. Dracy?
Thank you, Mr. President. On your sheet here, you've got strikeouts on some of the positions?
Yeah.
Were these positions?
No, they just weren't per, part of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, so.
So they're, they're not positions that were removed?
It, it's unchanged, I think, is how you should read that. Nothing will happen to them, they're not part of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gaber?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to go through the chair to the mayor, get your, which your thought is on this, because you're gonna have to meet with the recovery plan, as well as Mr. Donardo and probably other members. So just, you know, your, just your thoughts on, on how we should, how we should address this tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for the opportunity. You know, when, when I was running on the campaign trail, basically people said, we've gotta get things done in the city of Norwood, we've gotta move forward. Looking at the budget, we left a ton of money in capital improvements that was not spent last year. The reason why it wasn't spent was there was not staff, there weren't people in place to administer, there weren't people in place to run the projects. And even the projects that did get ran were administered by outside, outside resources. So, you know, when I, when I ran as mayor, I said, we're gonna hit the ground running. And one of the things that Councilman Donardo said to me last year, all through the years, we need to take action, we need to make action, we need to make things happen right now. But now you're saying, nah, let's wait, we'll figure this out, maybe in April. I'm the mayor, I've gotta put together a financial recovery plan, it has to be presented to them by me. The budget has to be presented to them by me. So, I, I didn't come to you not knowing that the financial recovery plan was going to be a hurdle, that we were gonna have challenges, and that we were gonna have to work through this. I came to you saying, this is the staff we need, we need to, we need to look at salaries, adjust the salaries to get qualified individuals. Talking about, well, you can hire people, but maybe later on, they, if they know later on, they might get the money. The reason why the city of Norwood, when I put the information out and said we need a Safety Service Director, why we didn't get any really good qualified people, was they're scared of this. They're scared of council that him hauls around and causes problems for them. And they've got a livelihood, they've put careers together, they don't want to come to work for the city of Norwood for $63,000 a year, because they realize the liability that that position holds. They realize the responsibility to the community. They also realize that the average pay is double that for an administrator for the city of Norwood. So if you think I can hire a city of Norwood administrator that'll come here, qualified, a good one, for half, for maybe three months of work, and then they'll maybe get a bump, but quite frankly, you got a council that, Norwood doesn't have the best record or reputation around the county or around the state for treating their minister, administrators that well. And, and I'm not saying that's council's problem, I'm just saying it's a fact. So, so when we look at this, I know that I'm going to have to sit down with that, with that financial recovery group, with that committee, and justify my actions. I sat down with them, with the staffing plan in place, I sat down with them and we went over it. And they didn't like it, they, they thought, well, you know, there were some things that were in there that maybe needed to be changed. And I said, we'll work with you, we'll, we'll work to get those things done. The fact that she sent an email an hour before, and the, and then the email got sent to you guys, is trying to control council. It's trying to tell you guys, hey, it doesn't matter if you know this is what needs to be done for the city of Norwood, and you know this is the right, right way to go, you can't, you can't do it, because we're in charge here. And what I'm saying is, you know, they are in charge to an extent, but I have to put together a budget. The budget you guys have to approve has to be put together in the mayor's office. And the, the financial recovery plan has to be put together in the mayor's office. And with these changes, we'll make changes in the financial, if we need to pass the finance, it's, it's supposed to be done March 26th. Finished, finalized, done. If we need to do it quicker, we'll do it quicker. If we need to put together a budget a little bit quicker, we'll do it a little bit quicker. My goal here is to get people in place so that through the spring and summer and fall, we are fixing the city, we're fixing the streets, we're doing the things that when we were standing on people's porches through the selection season, we said, we're gonna make an impact. I'm fine, if you guys wanna wait till 2021 to make that impact, that's fine with me, I guess. No, it's not. I wanna make an impact this year. And the only way we're gonna make an impact this year is if we move boldly ahead, if we put people in place at the right pay scale, people that are qualified, that have connections, that can get things done for the city of Norwood. And we've gotta do that soon, not later, sooner, not later. So, it's, it's up to you guys. My, my recommendation would be pass both of these ordinances, and I will work, I, as the mayor, will work with the Financial Recovery Committee with the, and we'll put together a plan, and if we need to put together a budget sooner than later, we'll do that. And then we move forward from there. It's the same goal I have with some other areas of negotiations, that we need to get settled quickly, because we need to get beyond this. My goal is to get that financial recovery, the, the people in that committee finished in the city of Norwood in 2021. They might not look at it that way. I think we need to put it on an aggressive timeline, we've got our finances in order, let's get, get our house in order, let's make some improvements, and let's move from there. So, I don't mean to preach to you guys, but I'm nerv, very nervous when you say, we can hire a couple, okay, I'm gonna hire a guy who maybe worked down the street, and he can be the Safety Service Director for a couple months, and then maybe we'll get it passed, and we'll get a qualified Safety Service Director, or we'll get a qualified Economic Development Director, or maybe by then we'll get a, a, a building commissioner that's qualified. We, we can't wait for that stuff. Pass this stuff. I, I wish I could tell you, tomorrow I'm hiring all these people, because they're all sitting right outside waiting for me. But they are not. The people that we're trying to, to, to bring to the city of Norwood are people that I've gotta reach out to and say, look, we've got a good package for you, come here, we need you. But I can't do that without council's help. And it, it's, it's just gonna take it that much longer to get things moving in the right direction. I don't wanna be paving streets late fall, I don't wanna be working on parks and playgrounds in the late fall, I want it to be in the late fall, I want it to be this year that we're making improvement. And, and I know it looks like April's right around the corner, but you know what's right around the corner is, is everything for me. It's, it's all coming at me, and I feel like if we don't move forward on this right now, and I'll work on the, I'll work with that group, and we'll get it settled out and squared away, and we'll move forward. That's, that's all I can say. Let's move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Thompson.
Question to the law director. What is penalty for noncompliance to financial recovery plan?
That's, it kind of depends. In theory, that the state can confiscate, what is it, a twentieth or whatever, there's a certain percentage of our money, 15%, they can just take and not let us touch. In theory, a public official taking an action that is contrary to the directions of the fiscal recovery staff or the fiscal recovery body is actually a crime. Exactly the way that plays out, I can't predict on this, I'm not, I have not seen the email from the, from the State Auditor's Office, I'm not sure exactly what they meant, or what positions in particular. I mean, I can see them having concerns about if you're going to blow the budget for the Building Department by whatever it is, you're going to pass something that would be beyond what's budgeted in that, I can see that being a problem, but I don't know exactly specifically what their concerns are. It's not a good thing to violate what they tell you to do, it's not a good thing to violate the fiscal recovery plan, there are some serious negative consequences.
Mr. Thompson.
Follow-up. I completely understand where you're coming from, Mr. Mayor. Thing is, is that we've got a process that we have to follow, and I know that the process is slower than what we would like, but that process is there, and the process has actually worked for us the last couple of years, which is why we hope that you will have money to spend on these things. And I think, and honestly, I think we probably all support these hires, but it's important, if you want to get us out of this financial recovery situation that we're in early, the way to do it is to not go and, and come up in noncompliance with the financial recovery plan within the first two months of your, of your tenure. I understand it's frustrating, and I share your frustration and wanting to get the right people in here, but there is a reason why we have these, these processes with the financial recovery plan that you're going through right now, and that we should probably give a chance to actually take the proper course of action before we vote on these. Second point to that, people that have served with me in the past know that I'm kind of a stickler for this, especially with matters of great financial interest, is that I believe that we have first, second, and third readings for a reason, that is to give the public opportunity to engage with us about these particular ordinances, to be able to have time to understand the ordinances, come to have a chance to speak to, hear a council or to speak with us in private. Even if we were to move forward with these ordinance today, I would recommend that we, we do either one or two readings and not do a full reading because these are new ordinances as they're presented now, these are not the same ordinances that were presented in our special meeting, first time they've been made public. So as a process, I will always push for having separate readings on these issues. Again, I support what you're trying to do, but we as a body are the ones who are responsible for passing and then going into noncompliance against the financial recovery plan. I understand that you would go and fight that battle for us, but you're not the one who, who passes this. It's us. So I appreciate your willingness to fight that battle, I would ask that you go ahead and fight that battle and then bring this back to us when it's part of the plan.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for maybe the, maybe Mr. Donardo. Do we know, when we're looking at the first ordinance to be passed here with the Safety Service Director and the two administrative staffs, do we know what the difference, the pay difference is from what that, that would be paid versus what the, what the previous secretary and safety service director?
The net effect of, I've got to add them up here. Why don't you go to another question, I'll get you an answer.
Sure, sure. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You got it.
Mr. Dracy.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, please, go ahead, let me, I got to regroup.
Mr. Dracy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question through the chair to the mayor, or Mr. President, I'm sorry. Question through the chair to the mayor, please. My, my question is, is that if we amend these ordinances to not take effect until April 1st, how big of a hindrance is that, though? I mean, you can, you can probably go to an applicant and say, "These have been passed, however, your pay scale will not go to this certain range until April 1st." I'm pretty certain that a lot of people that know that that's on paper will take the position for a couple of months until that pay scale.
I've never, I've never taken a job where they, where they said, "You're going to make more money, in a couple of months, your pay scale changes and you make more money." And I find it hard to believe that we will, we will find a professional in this, that administrator that would do that, would say, "Okay, I'll come here for half my pay for the first few months, and then you guys will start paying me what I'm really worth." I don't think we'll find that. The other concern I have is, you know, our chief building official, which is legally required to have to run a building department, is, is a contract person right now who has said he would carry that certification for the city of Norwood for a few months. I mean, ultimately, he could at any time say, "Next month, I'm not doing it," and then we close the building department down. You know, we really need to have a building or a health commissioner, but we haven't had a health commissioner in years. I mean, that, that part, that part's not a problem, I'd like to get the health commissioner in place, we have a, a health department that runs. Those are two, you know, right now we have a person who's, who's our interim or acting superintendent of public works that is carrying our, our water distribution certification. That is a critical, critical key position, it's legally required. I thought we had 30 days in January to get that position filled and name a person, we didn't, we had three days. So we had to get that completed. So that person is, is holding that position right now, but, you know, ultimately, we have a lot of, of legal positions that have to be, that, that need to be there, that I have filled in the interim, you know, hoping that it would give me just enough time to get salaries in place and get the right people, qualified people in. So it does throw a wrench into the plans, you know, that's why, that's ultimately why I came to you at the first meeting, was because I wanted to try to get these things secured so that I could start working on the process. I'd like to think that the hiring process is a short-term process, but we all know it is not. So even if you pass this right now, and this is the part that I think is important, if you pass this today, it's the 14th of January, so now I got, I've got to put that job out there. So say it takes two weeks for me to put the job out there and get actual applicants in, now I've got another process where I've got to interview those people. How long does that take? Two weeks, maybe two weeks, three weeks? Is it a month timeframe to find the right person? So, so now I've got six weeks into it, and then, well, these people aren't sitting around on their couch waiting to work, they're working someplace else. So these top administrators don't just up and leave, they don't say, "Well, I'm not giving any notice, I'm leaving." Two weeks typically, most of them give even more than that to the townships or the cities that they're leaving so that transition can occur. So really, when you guys are passing this, and this is my whole point, and I know she sent that email to try to put you guys in a frazzle, and it did a great job, but realistically, what I'm saying is, it's going to take two months to get these people hired. It's January, February, March. In April, I'm going to be, hopefully, have people sitting outside my office that are starting. So that's, that's my whole thing. If we wait on this for months, it's, it's not April that that person starts, and even when they do start, they don't hit the ground running. They've, they've got to get their feet wet, they've got to figure out what's going on in the city to, to get moving. We need those people sooner than later, is what I'm saying. If I, if I had all these people ready to be hired today, I'd say, you know, "Don't pass the ordinance, give me a couple of weeks, they're not even going to get, we're not even going to get them in here for a couple of weeks." That's not true. But I have to have, I have to have this stuff passed so I can even move forward with it. So, so how in noncompliance are we of an FRP if we pass something saying, "Okay, the salary range is this," but then we can't hire the people realistically until March or April? And at that point, we're passing a new FRP, and we're putting a new budget in place. So how, I have a hard time with that being a, a legal constraint today, today. If I was hiring them tomorrow, then I'd say, "Absolutely, fellas, don't do it." But we're not hiring them tomorrow, we're starting the process to get them in place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Donardo.
To answer the more immediate question, $34,840 would be the incremental cost. There are some assumptions around there that I had to make real fast on the employee benefits associated with one of those positions, but I think you're trying to gauge a ballpark, and 35K is about that ballpark.
35,000 additional funds for the...
For that, for all of that package.
Can you, can you state that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, through the chair, can Mr. Donardo state the range? Do you have the range in front of you that the new Safety Service Director would be, if we pass that today?
Yeah. I got the lower end of that, $90,640.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Is it appropriate to, to discuss the, the previous salary that was, didn't, didn't, wasn't there a $90,000 salary that was paid previous to this?
No, sorry. The combined, it's hard to get exact because I'm using estimated numbers in 2019 because these aren't final, final.
Yes, sir.
But they're going to be pretty dang close. And the 2019 net cost between all the funds was 74,683 by my calculation, that's going to be pretty close.
Thank you.
Of real cost, what we really paid that person.
Appreciate that. Can I follow up, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear on what, what happened here. New administration came to us with, with the plan to set this strength and to, with a plan that he needed to, to bring his people in place and to, to make improvements where needed. So we're having this discussion on the financial plan, but, and I don't want to get too, I don't want to get too personal, but it came back to us with, with raises across the board. So, and you can say it's only $9,000, but to me, it's $9,000 a year, but, so, and, and, you know, I'm going to label them unless you want to give somebody else responsibility. So Mr., the administration came to us and wanted to adjust the people that was in his control. He has, he has certain people that's in his control. He submitted that. It came back with raises across the board for some reason, is that, and... Who drew them up, I guess? I'm thinking that's Mr. Bonzel, Mr. Moore, does somebody want to take credit for that? Because I want to label them because it's not the, basically in the, in the, in our financial, in our, in our meeting we had, I addressed that I would like to see three ordinances here. And we could, we could have easily took the two ordinances we had, and we could have slid the two, Safety Service Director and for a third ordinance, we could have been looking at all three of them. So, and we could have passed the one, and we could, we may have been out of, out of our FRP, but financial recovery plan, but it wouldn't have been, you know, so...
Point of order.
I, I addressed that.
All this discussion is not a part of the, the committee report. This is, this should be a part of the ordinance. Once we get to the ordinance, then we can have that proper discussion. Not that I'm trying to squash discussion, we need to have that, but as far as a lot of this discussion, it should be a part of the ordinance discussion and not this committee report. We're just talking about the committee report.
The motion on the floor is to receive and file the finance budget and audit committee.
I mean, he's not wrong, but we did talk about this in the Finance Committee, and he did bring that up.
I was addressing our finance meeting, and my request in the finance meeting, and, and I can obviously see you're going to do a great job, this is no personal attacks of anybody, but my request were ignored in the financial meeting, and because of that, I feel like that I'm voting on an ordinance that is a mixture of several people's ordinance here. It's not the ordinance that was brought to us. So that's, that's my, that's my...
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Bonzel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's been a lot said here, and it's been pretty illuminating, I'll say, about how these next two years might look. First off, I just want to say, is, like, this, this body, council, is, you know, we don't have all the, I guess, administrative, you know, control that the mayor's office has, but I don't want, I don't think it's appropriate to demonize council because this has been taken a little bit too slow, and maybe demonize is too strong of a word, but I just want to make sure it's known that, I mean, we're, these seven people are duly elected and we're trying to do our job. The second part is to answer Mr. Braden's question about where the second ordinance came from, that came from my suggestion that we add the positions that are already, or that are appointed in the other departments, so it was five or six other positions. With that, out of the $255,000, $255,000 increase that, you know, is projected according to the Chair of Finance Committee, $9,000 of it was for the current existing people that have not had pay range increases in 10 years. And to just add those in so we have a cleaner ordinance, everything is done at the same time. And to try to compromise with Mr. Braden at the Finance Committee meeting, we even said, "Look, we'll put it so that those, any existing employee doesn't start until April 1st." So they, we have to have a new financial recovery plan by then, so they, theirs would not start until April 1st. If for some reason the financial recovery plan doesn't include funding for them, then we'd amend it and put it back down. But the, I guess the, the issue is that, like, we're, the reason why we might not pass any of them or may not even have readings tonight, it has nothing to do with those extra positions. Those extra positions that are on there, they're just, it's literally just helping to streamline a process so we don't have to go back and do that again. The issue is the financial supervisors saying that all of these other changes aren't going to be fitting in with the financial recovery plan. Now, I think each council member is going to have to determine how they want to vote on that, or even which motion we make at the time when that comes there, but, I mean, I do have to say, I somewhat agree with the mayor when it comes to if we're going to rewrite the plan anyways, and if we're out of compliance with the plan, basically what they're going to tell us at the January 22nd meeting is, "Oh, you're out of compliance, you need to rewrite your plan." "Okay, yes, yes, we'll do that right away," because that, that process is already in, is already happening. And so I definitely want to, I personally am going to vote yes on, you know, having a reading or two readings or what have you for these, because I think that it's not that big of a deal, and the mayor has already said that he is going to go and fight for what he wants to, to fight for. And so I kind of give deference to him because he is the one that does have to hire these people, it's his budgets, he's going to have to be the ones that, if there's things that will have to make sacrifices in other places, if that comes to be, for items that might not get done because of this. But I will say, some of these pay scales are so extremely low, I just, I can't imagine just like finding people at, at some of these scales that are actually going to do a really great job. And so anyways, long story short about that, I just really want to encourage a spirit of partnership here. You know, I know that, you know, the previous council member that spoke is upset that I think, you know, everything wasn't exactly what the mayor put in, but I think we actually have a stronger ordinance now that we've all worked together, and I think it's something that can be supported by everybody. So I would just encourage that previous council member to, you know, look at it objectively and, you know, vote on this by part of this, well, I would say this piece that we've all worked together on and not try to make this us versus them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Donardo.
Now, I think that was the last point of the Finance Committee. I think we motioned to accept those, our report, and then I think there's probably some follow-on to that, but that has to do with the ordinance, so.
Well, we've had a, a motion by Mr. Bonzel, and a second by Mr. Gabbard to receive and file the finance budget and audit committee.
No, let's do it.
Okay. No further discussion. Just call a roll.
All right, Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Next on the agenda, item I, second readings of... Oh, we did that in F. Moving on to item I, second readings of ordinance and resolutions, item... I don't even have, I don't have any before me, so that takes us to Item J-1. These are introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. Item J-1, Ordinance Adjusting Certain Salary Ranges and Amending Ordinances Number 73-1999, 7-2007, and 33-2009, and declaring an emergency A.
Can you clarify which one's A and which one's B?
A is the...
The short one.
Sure, okay.
Yes.
Hey, I just want to make sure that we...
It's okay.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Dracy.
Make a motion to have all three readings of this tonight.
Motion by Mr. Dracy to have all three readings. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion?
Before we throw it on that, I just want to kind of, because we've only had an hour to think about this email, plus the meeting. And timing is really coming into play as kind of the theme in the past two hours. And the way that I would kind of think about it is, we have January twenty-second written down as the next Finance Recovery Commission meeting. Soon after that, let's call it a day, they're going to come back with a recommendation. And we don't know what comes with that recommendation. It could be, I know it's bad. I don't know if we know exactly what bad is, but let's assume big deal. At the same time, we have the start of Feb. Jim, Jim Stitt, the auditor, you, and then Counselor are going to come together and start to make Draft One of the Financial Recovery Plan. We know that that timing is going to happen about two weeks after January twenty-second. So we have this gap here in which we would be kind of out of compliance, and the big deal or the big bad would happen. In addition to timing, it's also the timing, or in addition to that timing, it's also the timing of how would the hiring process happen? In my mind, if the Financial Recovery Plan isn't passed until March twenty-third, can you actually hire somebody at the higher level? I think yes, because we would have an ordinance that allows us to do that, even though the Financial Recovery Plan hasn't passed until mid-March. So in my mind, January twenty-second is this Financial Recovery Commission having a conversation. What if we were just in compliance and we had two readings? They had their meeting to say, look, they're serious, they want to have a Financial Recovery Plan ASAP for the positions, and then we voted on the ordinance after that. What I'm trying to say, and that would be two weeks from now, I'm trying to say is, what if we had two readings, we got more intel from the Finance Recovery Plan, and then we pass these two weeks from now? That's not tonight, Mayor, but that's also not April first. And I don't think we're losing that much by going in that order, because one or two, either the Financial Recovery Commission is going to tell us what the big bad is and how much that penalty is going to hurt us, or they're going to say it's not that big a deal, and then we're only two weeks behind. Thoughts, guys?
Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Donardo. I would like to see us just do one reading tonight, and next Wednesday is the twenty-second. That's when that they would meet the mayor, and I agree with the mayor. We do need to be aggressive on this. So let him go on the twenty-second with these in mind and, you know, fight the battle and see what they say. And, you know, with the, with, in mind that, you know, we're starting here the first of the month, we're going to be rewriting this, and this is going to be in it anyway. So then, then we come back the following Tuesday on the twenty-eighth, and we have the additional readings, and we move forward with this and get it behind us.
Mr. Dracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. You stole my thunder there a little bit. Mr. Gabbard, I may have jumped the gun a little bit on the three readings, but I do agree that we could probably hold off on the three readings tonight and then come back on the twenty-eighth after the Financial Recovery meeting and make our decision then.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I still, well, I truly believe that, I mean, these positions, like, this is the slimmer version that we're talking about now, so creating the Executive Assistant to the Mayor position and having the two administrative, part-time administrative assistants, I still would be inclined to vote for all three readings tonight. I think it's important for the city to start functioning properly. And as I saw last night at the Citizens on Patrol meeting that, where the mayor was there, there were, like, four things that came up for him just there at that meeting, and I can't even imagine everything else that's coming up. So me personally, I, I mean, we know that the city is behind. I think that we pass, firstly, I'd like to see Version A passed tonight because it just had, it's the slimmed-down version, and just let him get going, because there's a lot of things in the city that need to be fixed, that need to be addressed, and without the people to do it, I don't think that he can do it. So, I mean, I'm still supporting all three readings, so we'll see where it lands.
Mr. Kelch.
I would also like to speak in support of this ordinance. Like Mr. Bonzel said, it's a slimmed-down version. It gives him something to go forward with today to start working to get stuff done that we, that are needs, high essential needs. And I think having all three readings tonight and letting him get into that process, that lengthy hiring process they talked about, it kind of allows him to move forward that, let some of these people know we're serious and we want to fix things here, and we can look at the other thing later and see where we need to go on that, but this gives him just enough to get started and start to move that ball forward.
Mr. Donardo.
I promise I hear both of you. I also know that neither one of you are able to tell me what being out of compliance with the Financial Recovery Plan, in this case, on the twenty-second, is actually going to do. So in my head, that's a whole lot of risk. Maybe it's nothing. And in fact, when I was driving here, I was the one, I said it in the Finance, when I was giving the committee report, maybe it's, maybe it's nothing. Maybe we say, who cares? And they tell us to go amend the plan, and we're going to do that anyway. We also don't know what that risk is, and waiting two weeks, which is really, we could commit to that. We could all tell each other in front of the mayor, in front of the president of council, in front of these guys, that we will be doing the third final and voting on this in two weeks. But we'll have the insight from the twenty-second meeting, from the Financial Recovery meeting. We're going to specifically ask, what would happen if we did this? Here's our plan. We're kind of opening, open kimono and having a real, meaningful conversation, a partnership with the Financial Recovery Commission, rather than saying, we're doing this, go tell us how bad a punishment that is. It's only two weeks, and it just really mitigates the risk here.
Mr. Thompson.
I'd also point out that, as I mentioned before, having multiple readings, if we had on January first committed to having three readings, we wouldn't have the third reading until our next meeting.
Great point. That's a great point.
If we were literally following process as we should, we wouldn't have a final reading info on these ordinances until our next meeting anyway.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really enjoying this discussion. This is really, this is really enjoyable. I'm really impressed, and sometimes passion gets the best of us, you know? So, and I want to give credit where credit's due, and if I, if I seem to attack anybody personally, I just want to apologize, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Dracy?
So, if I rescind, rescind my motion for three readings, and we go ahead and amend this to April first, the mayor himself made it, made the point that I was trying to make is that he won't have anybody in place until April anyway. So if we amend this, we're still looking at that compliance as far as being in it to the commission, because this wouldn't be part of that three-month FRP, right?
I disagree.
Mr. Dracy, are you finished, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Donardo.
Yeah. That, I'm, I don't think anyone was motioning to amend. I think what we're saying is, we either A, held to three readings, or we just found, we just, I just remembered that if we followed the process, we'd be held to that anyway. So we could literally leave these A and B exactly as they were. It sounds like there's a lot of support for B anyway, the full package. In two weeks, we could sit back here, vote on A, vote on B, you got everything you want, city can move forward, and we'll know, potentially, and we'll know on, from the finance, directly from the horse's mouth, from the Financial Recovery Commission, what their thoughts are on this. And, and we can start asking questions, because you're going to be there, and I'll probably be there, too. What would have happened, or how should we go about this? What is the right way? The fact that none of us are able to, you know, explain that clearly to me says that we need some education, and for two weeks, that's a pretty low-cost education.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Mr. Bonzel, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I mean, I'm pretty, like, certain, so, I mean, the penalties that they can engage us, let's just say they decide that we're, I mean, this is, we've been out of compliance before. I mean, this is not the first time that this has happened to the city since we've been in fiscal emergency. There's things that come up, and then they'll say, oh, you need to change this. And then maybe, sometimes we'll say, we'll change it, and sometimes we'll put a passive resolution that says, no, you know, we want to keep the plan that we have. And so there's always this back and forth. But I think the biggest penalty they have that they can do, and they wouldn't even do it on the first meeting because they would give us a warning, but they would just, they would cut ten percent of our spending from the previous year. So basically, whatever our spending was in, you know, February twenty-eighteen, they would say, you know what, we're just going to cap your city's spending at ten percent less, or fifteen percent less, but whatever it is, slightly less than what you spent a year ago. Well, in my, my mind, I mean, if, truly, if the mayor is willing to take that risk, that, that could happen, I don't, I think the likelihood of that is so, like, it's not likely to happen, but it's, it's again, it's his department, and so anyways, I'm still supporting just getting this done, the slimmed-down version. I mean, I do think it's important. I think waiting two more weeks to have nobody to answer the phone is essentially, is probably not in the city's best interest.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to concur with Mr. Bonzel. I'm supporting that also. It's Mr., it's the administration, their responsibility, and I'm also supporting this.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we not have any by answering the phone? Because I think we got people in there that are in there, like, temporary, so I'm not, I'll go through, no. I think we've got a commission that has been put together to keep us in check and help us get out of this fiscal crap for less term that we've been in for the last few years. These folks, they're a lot more experienced at this, have a lot more knowledge than we do, and so I would, I would feel much better and at least bring it to them next Wednesday and see what their thoughts are on this, instead of poking the bear. And the first time that we, we encountered them as a new body, the first time we're going to encounter them, we're going to, we're going to go in aggressive on them, and I just don't think that that's the right move to do. That's why I would, you know, I would feel much better if we just went with the first reading tonight, see what happens next Wednesday, and then come back and finish it all up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for three readings. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
No.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
All members present, voting four to three, motion fails. What's your pleasure, gentlemen? Mr. Thompson.
I'll move we have the first two readings of the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Thompson for the first two readings. Mr. Donardo, second. No discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Two readings. Mrs. Williams.
Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number seventy-three dash nineteen ninety-nine, seven dash two thousand and seven, and thirty-three dash two thousand and nine, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number seventy-three
them, we're going to, we're going to go in aggressive on them, and I just don't think that that's the right move to do. That's why I, I would, you know, I would feel much better if we just went with the first reading tonight, see what happens next Wednesday, and then come back and finish it all up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for three readings. Please call it.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
No.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present, voting four to three, and motion fails. What's your pleasure, gentlemen? Mr. Thompson.
I'll move we have the first two readings of the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Thompson for the first two readings.
Yeah, the second.
Mr. Donardo, second. No discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Two readings. Mrs. Williams.
Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number 73-1999, 7-2007, and 33-2009, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number 73-1999, 7-2007, and 33-2009, and declaring an emergency.
Is that listed as A? Yes. Should we be reading that A? Should we state it as A also? Please state that.
Oh. Okay, and that's A. Ordinance A.
That's what we have on the agenda.
Okay.
Moving forward, Item J. I'm sorry.
What, what are we, have to vote on it now, right?
No, we just.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Moving forward.
You know which way's up.
Item J2. Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number 73-1999, 7-2007, and 33-209, 2009, and declaring an emergency B. Mr. Thompson.
Move we have the first two readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Thompson for two readings, second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Mr. Thompson.
Just wanted to say, um, thank you to the Finance Committee. I had made a couple of suggestions, uh, in our prior meeting, and, uh, not on the Finance Committee, and I was just happy, as I watched the committee meeting, to see that you, uh, you addressed, uh, some of my concerns, and that they are reflected in this ordinance. So, thank you, uh, for all the work that you did during that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so, I did want to just express, uh, concern, although, uh, I guess it is what it is, but, you know, there's been some discussion, you know, at the Finance Committee meeting and outside, about paying these people monthly or bi-weekly, and, uh, some of the positions that are here are people that are currently employed with the city, uh, and so, uh, this, this ordinance dictates that they are paid monthly if they're a salaried position. Um, you know, I still just have concerns with that. I still think that we should leave it up to, uh, as the original version had, the elected official, uh, over that ordinance, because we have people being paid bi-weekly, most of the city employees are union, all unionized city employees are paid bi-weekly, so we're running a bi-weekly payroll anyways. Uh, so I still think there's concerns there, but, I mean, I'm still going to support the ordinance, I just do feel for those people that are now going to be waiting, you know, two to three more weeks now for one of those paychecks that they have already planned their life around getting, you know, earlier, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for two readings. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
No.
All members present, voting six to one, motion passes. Please have two readings.
Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number 73-1999, 7-2007, and 33-2009, and declaring an emergency, version B. Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinances number 33-1999, 7-2007, thirty, and 33-2009, and declaring an emergency, version B.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Next on the agenda, item J3. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Med Account Management Incorporated for the continuation of EMS billing services for the Norwood Fire Department, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kelsch.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we have the first reading of this tonight.
I'm sorry.
I would like to move that we have the first reading of this ordinance tonight.
You said one reading.
One reading.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Mr. Kelsch.
Um, yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the residents of, uh, West Norwood on Elm Street for coming out tonight and speaking about this. Um, it's both, both very brave and unselfish of them to come share their stories with us, and help get the ball rolling on, hopefully, a possible solution for this problem.
Which one are we on here?
I'd like to have one ordinance, because I want to give other residents the opportunity to come out and speak, and be heard, and share their stories with us as well, that maybe couldn't be here tonight.
Mr. Kelsch, I'm sorry, the three is for the, uh, Med account, Medicaid account, Med account management ordinance.
Mine's out of order here.
I think the one that, um, you are looking for, sir, is, uh, J4. Am I correct? You're looking at J3.
No, mine's showing four here. And then, the three.
We amended that in the, uh, in the, in the minutes, there was a typo there. What's the reading on the floor? What's the motion? The motion on the floor is one reading. Do you want to rescind that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kelsch wants to rescind that, Mr. Donardo?
Yeah.
Rescind that as well. So, so what is your pleasure? Mr. Geraci.
I'll make a motion to have all three readings of this tonight.
Motion for all three readings. May I have a second?
We have to vote on the first motion.
Forgive me, forgive me. Well, they rescinded the first motion. Both of those were rescinded, correct?
Mine was, yeah.
Oh, you rescinded?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We don't have to vote, yeah, as long as you pull it back.
This thing of the law, ordinance.
Exactly.
So, he rescinded three.
Right, so now we have a motion by Mr. Geraci for all three readings? Do I have a second? Mr. Kelsch? Yes. Any discussion? Mr. Gabbard.
Uh, I'd like to see if, um, Chief, Assistant Chief McCabe wouldn't mind speaking to this, uh, and just kind of give us some insight on what it actually is, and, uh, what we're looking at here.
Yes.
What you have in front of you is a service agreement that should have been done in about August of last year, so, um, Med Account has been our primary EMS billing service vendor for the last 20 years for this city, and do a remarkable job. Uh, the Law Department did, uh, go over the contract to make sure it was, uh, fit to form, and, and provided it to, back to the Fire Department, and then we submitted for ordinance. Um, basically, it's just so the Safety Service Director can enter into contract. They're still performing without this, but, uh, it's a little bit overdue. Uh, basically, what happens is, in our city, and, and most municipalities around us, um, the Fire Department's bill insurance companies for their EMS services. Uh, by and large, we are like 90% of our peers, where we bill our residents insurance, and, um, we soft bill, we don't hard bill, and then, um, we soft bill non-residents three times, and then it's written off. Um, I can give you specific data points if you want, via email, or you can ask specific questions if you'd like regarding it. Um, the fee, you will notice in the ordinance, was a minor increase, uh, from 6.5 to 6.25. Keep in mind, that's not money that goes out of Norwood, that's taken off the top before money comes into Norwood. And last year, we did around $600,000 in revenue, just under that, for EMS billing last year.
Any questions, Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, is, is this a, another four-year contract, or is this a, a renewal of a?
It's a renewal.
A renewal, a, a, a renewal of a four years?
I have a different rate.
You want a contract for another four years?
That's right.
So, you, you stated, um, it went from, uh, 6.5 to 6.25, and my paperwork says 6.75.
It went from 6.5 to 6.75. It went up by 0.25%.
I thought you said, oh, okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, so, I'm assuming that's the going, that's the going, and they've been doing this for 20 years, you said?
Med Account is, by and large, the largest provider of this service in, in this area. Um, you know, larger municipality like Cincinnati does it internally, but it's a large process, especially when you deal with high-volume Medicare and Medicaid patients like we do, because of the federal regulations and the reporting details, it's, it's critically important that you have somebody that understands those, which change on an annual basis. So, in terms of recouping money from the federal government, you need to have appropriate staff. We would not be able, the, the Fire Department did, in the late 90s, do it on their own, just not feasible.
Sure.
So, we, we have been with Med Account for, oh, almost 20 years. Their rates were about 10%. They've decreased over the years. This is the first time we've seen an, an ask for an increase, and they've asked all the municipalities they service for that modest increase.
Any further questions, Mr. Brayden?
One, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So, in the contract, and this is just personal, this is my, me going through the contract, and personal questions that I have, maybe, it says that the EMS agency will identify one administrative and one clinical representative, and I believe that is from someone from the, from the Fire Department?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me who that is?
Well, it used to be the previous chief.
Previous chief?
It's typically a chief duty.
Okay.
Now.
Right now, he retired, so?
He is retired.
And we haven't?
Correct.
We're just trying to find somebody to take care of that.
Well, so, in, in his absence, I fulfill that, and we also have a staff captain who does, it's kind of a tag team, and we do, we do both.
I have several questions that, about this, um, and, just curiosity, we've been going for two years now, line by line, and, so I don't know if this is the appropriate venue, or maybe if, if you'd have a problem with me putting this in the Finance Committee, and taking a look at it, and, and getting some questions answered, or, I just, I don't want to, you know, I'm sure.
Sir, that's, that's your, that's your call. I, I would say that we're a little bit remiss in not having this completed back to them, um, last year.
Okay.
You know, it's, uh, they, they've done great work for us, certainly have no problem answering any of your guys' questions.
Sure.
Um, more than willing to, to come to additional meetings as needed. I would say this, I mean, this has been a vetted contract, it's very similar to what we've had in process for the last number of years. I don't know that would, uh, need additional, since it's already been through law, but I'm certainly happy to, to participate in that, if so desired.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kelsch.
Um, yeah, I, I did get a chance to, uh, look through this this weekend, and, um, it seems like a pretty standard contract. The rate increases, I mean, it's minimal, um, and it's something, correct me if I'm wrong, um, it, so we can get mon, make money.
But it's, it's a way to recoup a, a portion of our expenses for providing service, yes, sir.
Yes, I mean, I, I would like to say, I don't, I don't think we should hold up this process.
Now, for peace of mind, the, the process will continue whether or not you pass it tonight or not, just so you know, you, you can certainly take that opportunity to do that if you want, um, but, it, it's, it's been overdue, so, um, as, as soon as I was able to get it, uh, through law and, uh, submit it for ordinance, so, I was very pleased with that.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Bonzel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I've reviewed the contract as well, I've reached out to Mr. McCabe about, or, is it Chief McCabe? Is it?
That's an appropriate designation.
Okay, just want to double-check, don't want to get it wrong, so, uh, because that's great. So, Chief, I've reached out to Chief McCabe, he was helpful, and he's, you know, there's still, there are a few questions about our process, I mean, I still don't know, I mean, you know, we have a superior Fire Department, you know, providing EMS services, uh, and so I don't know if we should be writing off non-resident, you know, EMS bills, considering, you know, the high-quality level of service that they get here, so, I would just say that, uh, you know, I don't, it has nothing to do with this ordinance, I mean, I think that we might want to look at our just billing practices in general, but, uh, yeah, I'm comfortable with the ordinance today, and, uh, getting this approved.
I can respond to the write-offs if you would like. So, just, just so the, the public knows, um, in, in total charges, the EMS service charged out about $1.8 million. Now, with that comes, like anything else with health insurance provision, there are adjustments, and we, we saw about, uh, 900,000-plus in adjustments. So, when we have revenue of around $600,000, really, our write-offs are about 289, so, yes, well, it's been considered. Um, my, my, my worry is the, the hard billing aspect. I'm, I don't know, I, I've had discussions, I've asked, no one hardbills outside of the city of Loveland slash, uh, it's a private fire company, Loveland Sims Fire, um, in Forest Park. Everyone else does the exact process we do in terms of, of billing collection. Uh, we have a, a pretty good collection rate, in terms of about 82% of our transports generate some revenue, um, you know, write-offs are, are unfortunately part of the deal. I, I get concerned when we talk about hard billing, when we talk about a, someone who may be writing that bill for the ambulance, but not getting their prescription medicine, or they're, they're making a decision. Can I pay my health insurance? Can I pay for my prescriptions? Can I pay for the ambulance ride, and still pay for food? That, that's what I worry about in terms of the hard bill. Emergency services, it's expensive to provide, and, and I, I think we do a reasonably decent job of recouping within the limits, uh, at our current setup, but, obviously, if, uh, administration or council wants to look at that, we can certainly make that happen.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, you touched on, on, on one other thing that I had a question, you mentioned hard billing and soft billing. Um, if you want to elaborate on that, I, in the contract, it says that they will contact three occasions by automated phone, so, and then after that, I guess it's, if, if, if there's no response, maybe that then it moves to write off, or I'm not exactly sure.
Correct.
Write that off, so, my concern, I mean, that's one of the things that, that jumped out at me, if somebody, if I get an automated phone call nine times out of 10, so anyway, maybe that's finance, maybe that's finance meeting discussion, but that's one of the things that jumped out at me, and, so if you want to, uh, what's the difference between hard billing and soft billing, if you want to?
Hard billing is you're going to collections, that we're going to send your account into collections, and then we'll see a reduced recovery from that. Um, soft billing is, is that we're trying to get you a period bill, we're sending you a notice three times, um, and then we'll, we write it off.
Sure.
Um, you know, it's the, the lion's share of EMS services practice soft billing. Um, not the only two that I know of, I, I can't speak to what Cincinnati does, but of the, the clients that Med Account services, there's only two that hard bill. Now, keep in mind, if there's a change in terms, and, and when I say change in terms, if the city decides at some point they want to change to a hard billing, that's just a, a phone call to Med Account and say, "We want to change our structure. We want to go to a, a hard bill account." Doesn't have anything to do with that, that's just a provision contract. So, we can, we can change that at any time, if it's so desired. I, I would, I would argue against that in terms of what we provide, but, like I said, if it was deemed necessary by Finance, that's, then we'll make that happen.
I appreciate that. Can, can I respond?
Yes, sir.
Um, so, so, what's the motion? Is the motion to have all three readings?
Motion is to have all three readings.
So, I would, I would suggest that we have two readings, and, so, and then maybe discuss this in Finance, and, I, I'm, I'm sure that this is great, I mean, have, that's kind of what, where, where I'm going, if, if anybody agrees with me, um, not that I don't want to pass this, I maybe, you know, this is great, this is 6.75, is that the going rate? Have we shopped around? I, we've used them for 20 years, I don't know how many, how many facilities do this.
Luckily, none.
Not many, right, so, anyway, um, maybe it's, yeah.
Mr. Donardo.
Yeah, I, I don't think those things are mutually exclusive, I'm wondering if we could still push to pass the ordinance as quickly as possible, and then, it seems like the thing that you're most interested in discussing was potentially moving to a hard billing scenario. What I just heard was that you can sign the contract and still do that.
Correct.
In six months, in nine months, in 12 months, in whatever you want, and so, I, I don't think that that decludes us from still moving forward on this. And we can still talk about it, Finance, I'll, I'll put it on the agenda, but.
Mr. Geraci.
To Mr. Brayden, um, I'm going to echo his sentiments that hard billing is not a good idea. The years that I've spent in the EMS and fire service, I've, I've seen hard billing, and I've seen soft billing. Um, I know communities that were hard billing at one point, and then went to soft billing because they started to realize that the elder generation were having problems, again, paying for medications, so, what do you do? Call a squad, or pay for your medication the next day? Uh, this, this is a, a reasonable request upon us, and it is a good company, I've dealt with them myself, so, I, I would suggest we just continue on with the three readings and pass this tonight.
Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I appreciate it, Chief, for, for elaborating on this. I would, uh, had just asked that we do the three readings tonight, and then during new business, we place this, uh, topic into Finance Committee, and we can go through, and any things that need to be tweaked, then we can, you know, the chief can respond with that way, and, uh, we can get him taken care of that way, but at least we get this taken care of, since we're way behind on that.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any issues with that, I just, I have some concerns, and, some questions about the automated billing, and, um, so I don't, I don't have any issues with that. Uh, you know, it's a four-year contract, so, you're basically signing a contract for four years, it seems a little long to me, um, a lot could happen in four years, so, but I don't have any issues with that, so I appreciate, I appreciate the comment, Mr. Gabbard.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Chief McCabe.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is for all three readings. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Med Account Management Incorporated for the continuation.
Yes, sir.
For continuation of EMS billing services for the Norwood Fire Department, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Med Account Management Incorporated for the continuation of EMS billing services for the Norwood Fire Department, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Med Account Management Incorporated for the continuation of EMS billing services for the Norwood Fire Department, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Moving on to J4.
Well, we need, we need, yeah.
I'm, I'm, forgive me, forgive me.
Yeah, you're fine. So, I move that we, uh, pass the ordinance.
I second that.
Second one, Mr. Brayden. Please call it.
Oh, well, we needed a, that, there will be a discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody's involvement in, um, discussion, um, and I, it wasn't my intention to hold this up, so I appreciate the discussion, and, um, I'm ready to vote.
Comment.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, motion passes. Item J4. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with a qualified engineering firm to complete a study of the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer System, design an improvement plan, and help the city identify funding sources to make immediate needed improvements and long-term solutions to the stormwater issues in the area. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we have the first reading of this ordinance tonight.
Motion by Mr. Kelch, second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. Kelch.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Try it again. Sorry, I was a little excited last time. It's passion. It's passion. Again, I would like to thank the residents that came out from Elm Avenue to discuss their issues. Again, it's very brave of them to address us, and very unselfish of them to share their problems that they've had, and the struggles that they faced. And I would like to have one reading this night, so we can allow some other residents that might not been able to be here, or didn't feel comfortable addressing us and sharing their stories, to come out and have a chance to do that. I think this is something that we really, really, really need to do. I think it's been a neglected issue for a long time, as we've heard tonight from various residents and a business owner. I think going forward, we're here to do a job, and that's to help the people that live in this city. Whether they voted for us or not, we're here to help them. And doing this, it's that first step towards being the solution, and not a part of the problem, and waiting and acting like it doesn't happen. Because it does, it's a real issue, and it does happen. And there's been countless dollars in damage, lives greatly affected. And I think having this reading tonight, and going forward next meeting, and hearing from other residents, and having another reading, I think that people can look at this and see that we are trying to do something, finally.
Any further discussion? Mr. Geraci.
I don't know that we need to hear from other residents. One resident coming in tonight to discuss it would have been enough. We've all seen the videos, we've all seen photos. My suggestion was, would be to have all three readings and pass this tonight, to be honest. I've heard, I've heard from residents personally outside here. I know you have, Mr. Kelch. I don't know how many others have heard, but I think we need to knock this out tonight.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I actually was going to express the, or at least sentiments of Mr. Geraci there. I do think that, well, I guess a question to the mayor, through the chair, if you don't mind. I mean, if we pass all three tonight, can we get started on this sooner?
Mr. Mayor.
Well, if you pass it in three, we'll get started. If you pass it over the next couple of meetings, we'll get started. I mean, ultimately, we're going to sit down with the engineering firm that's been doing a lot of work for the city of Norwood, start negotiations with them, and discussions with them on what needs to be done, pretty much right after this meeting. Mr. Kelch has made it critically clear, and to me, that it is imperative that we get working on this. I think the residents recognize it as being a major challenge for the city. So, we'll start, you know, as soon as you have the first reading, we're going to start discussing this, and make, putting plans in place to make things happen. Again, this is another one of those points that the fiscal recovery plan, people would say, "Oh, you don't have money for that." We do have money for this. And I'd like to say, "Oh, well, we've got engineers that are charging us tomorrow for this," but it's not. We are looking at, we're looking forward, we're looking at the future. And the money will be in place to cover the engineering costs that's here. So, you know, they can, you know, there's a difference between actually helping us, or being a hindrance. And in some of these situations, they're absolutely being a hindrance. And the email that went out to you guys was not a help. It was not constructive. It wasn't helpful to the city of Norwood. What they tried to do is basically control what council would look at and try to do. And that's really wrong. That's not the right, that's not what they're, they're supposed to be helping us and guiding us, not holding us back. So, when you talk about this, this is not a process that happens over a week's time. This is a process that is going to happen over months' time. And quite frankly, it should have happened years ago, but it's going to take months and months for this to get taken care of. We could do some quick stopgap, maybe, things to prevent some stuff, and then we try to find the real solution. And it's not going to be an easy solution, I think.
Sure. Yeah, just, yeah. So, yeah, it wasn't super clear whether, like, passing this tonight, all of it tonight, is going to make it faster, but I would imagine that it can't hurt. And the previous councils, too, I mean, this has always been a priority of ours. I mean, we've asked the city administration to look at this, previous city administration to look at this. I mean, whether it's staffing, or whatever, what have you, I mean, this has always been a priority. And in that email, this was mentioned in that email, and I will say that the Stormwater Management Fund is not a fiscal recovery fund. So, it's not a fund that, they might, they still have some input into, you know, overall city finances, but we don't pass a financial recovery plan to address the Stormwater Management Fund. And specifically, it was asked in that email, is, basically, is, what other priorities are you going to spend, you know, money on? Essentially, like, is this truly the biggest priority? I think it's what they were kind of getting at. And I think all of us, like, resoundingly, if you want to talk about stormwater issues, I think Elm Avenue, there's nothing greater than the Elm Avenue flooding that's happening right now. So, I mean, to me, I would say.
I thought, I think somebody said amen back in the back.
Sure, yeah.
Excuse me.
And so, to me, I wouldn't mind voting on a motion that does all three readings. You know, I'll go wherever the council goes, but I just think if there's ever a definition of, you know, an emergency, or a definition of where we need to suspend rules, I mean, giving these people some help, as we've seen, I think, is there, because we don't know when that next rainstorm is going to happen. So, the more that we can start on the engineering work, which is all this approves, is the engineering work, you know, the sooner we can finally get them a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Good to know.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, because there, we're talking about process, and we could still continue about this process, potentially read and pass this, and not be out of compliance. And I know you just said that, but it's incredibly important we realize that, because there is a difference between the way that we discussed and voted on the ordinance around salary ranges, and the way we're discussing and potentially reading/voting on this. And that difference is not necessarily the email, it's whether we were, are, or not in compliance with the financial recovery plan. So, that's a big point of when we fast-forward three months, we look back at that segregation of the difference. The second thing, and I don't know if you know this, but I know you were looking at that, like, as you talked about it very briefly right during the Finance Committee meeting. Do you have, like, since that Finance Committee meeting, any idea of what that would cost? Is there, like, quotes, or preliminary quotes, you started at least thinking about at ballpark?
Two. Costs two.
Costs for the engineering study.
Well, this is approving up, this is approving up to $20,000.
Right? But is that, oh, sorry.
What it would cost, I don't personally know. But this approves it up to that amount to go forward, seek out a plan, seek out funding means, and get the ball rolling.
I get that. I guess maybe I was asking my question to say, if it's $100,000, and I don't know what it is, and I was wondering if we had ballparks in mind, if it's $100,000, we could probably still, and I'm just kind of thinking on the fly here, I think we could still move forward with this, enter into a base contract with, like, options, or something like that, to still stay within budget. So, even if, if any of us are concerned with, what if this is a $100,000 expense, we could structure it such that we're not going over the ordinance until we put that into the point of capital expenditures and still go on.
Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, this has really got to be our top priority in getting these folks taken care of down there. I grew up a block away from this particular intersection, and quite honestly, I can't imagine the fear that goes through when they hear a weather report coming, that there's rain coming. I think of that, and I don't even live on that side of town anymore. I live on Cathedral now, and every time I hear that we're going to have heavy rains, my first thought goes to there. So, we need to get these folks taken care of. The email that we got today from Mary Ann, Anne, Anne.
Anne Mary.
Anne Mary, yeah. What give or take. Actually states in here that the, that only the two ordinances that address the two salary ordinances, those ordinances that address the salary things would make us, would consider, be considered to be out of compliance if we went forward on this. These, she mentions these in here, but it doesn't say that this would take us out of compliance, nor the next one that we're going to be considering. So, I would encourage Mr. Kelch to change his motion to all three readings. Let's get that, get that moving, because springtime's coming. Actually, I don't even think that we've had a winter this year. We're already in the spring, it seems. But that's coming. And with that comes a whole lot of fear, and I'd like to get us moving on this sooner than later. Thank you.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I can appreciate, appreciate that. And I appreciate Ms. Pence you coming here tonight, sharing your story, obviously emotional. Ms. Childress, I'm sorry for your loss. I, too, grew up at 47th and 35th Section Avenue, right around the corner. I know Elm Avenue well, and I know what's happening. And I think, I think the mayor has stated that whether we have one reading or three tonight, that he is working, he will work on this. So, we've, we're worried about the financial recovery plan, and I am, I am a little concerned with barboring them with all these expenses. But however, I think this should be top priority. And so, I will encourage us to have the first reading, or the, or two readings, and then take this to the Financial Recovery Meeting on the 22nd. He can, he can get, he can move forward with finding an agency to look into this, and then we can be ready for the third reading when it comes back, because I will support all three readings, as long as it doesn't, you know, which, this needs to be taken care of. So, this is, this is close to me. This is my neighborhood, and I've really feel for the issues that's happening, and this needs to be top priority. So, I think we should do one or two, take it to the recovery plan, and then the third, the third reading we can do. And he still said it would not slow this down. So, I think that would be the wise thing to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I know there were some numbers that were thrown out, potentially about what the final thing would cost. I mean, this specific, you know, ordinance that we're doing, it authorizes up to $20,000 for the engineering study, to help figure out, you know, what the issue is, and potentially how to pay for it. But, I mean, we should not be under any illusion that this is going to be a cheap fix. I mean, I think $100,000, if that's how much it costs, would be, I mean, I'd be celebrating that that's how much it would only cost. I think it's going to be likely significantly more than that. And so essentially, and also, so we're going to be revising the plan before the end of March. I kind of want to know, before we revise that plan, a cost estimate of what this might cost, to see if we might be able to somehow get that in there, at least get part of that in there. And so, if we don't get this started as soon as possible, the engineering firm's not going to have time to actually figure it out. And once we approve that financial recovery plan, it can definitely be amended, and there are, there are situations where it might be, but it is like pulling teeth to get support from the state to amend that plan, because once they've got one in place, they're like, "Oh, good," you know, then they're on to their next city, that's a financial emergency, help them amend their plan. So, you know, I, again, we know this is a major issue. I just do believe that we should amend that motion and have all three readings tonight.
Any other discussion? Mr. Geraci.
I'll say the same thing I said the first time. I think we need to amend it to all three readings as well.
So, Mr. Kelch, do you want to amend your motion to all three readings?
Yeah, I just want to give more residents a chance to come out and be heard. I mean, even though we're saying that we don't need to hear from all of them, I think a lot of them feel that they need to be heard from. So, I wanted to give an opportunity for more of them to come out and be heard. However, I am very excited right now by the support of council on this. It's overwhelming, and I think that these people that are affected are kind of overwhelmed by that, because it's been a lot of time that this has been going on. And with that, I would like to amend my motion to all three readings tonight. Let's get, let's get to work on this.
Mr. Thompson, would you like to amend your second?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bunsel?
Yeah, I just want to thank the two previous council members for amending their motion. I do want to also just, you know, respond as well. I mean, residents can come and speak on any topic. So, I mean, I'd love to have them, you know, at any council meeting, and if even they want to come to every single one of them until it's fixed. I mean, that's definitely their prerogative. So, you know, I, yeah, so, I would just say that they're always welcome, and I would, I hope, if you could express that to them, too, just let them know that please come anytime, because, I mean, it was very illuminating. I've heard, I've talked to Jennifer before, but to hear the full story, I have not heard the full story that I'd heard today. And so, it was helpful. So, I'm glad that they came and invite them to come back if they would like to.
So, the motion on the floor, I'm going to reread this, because we're going to add in declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with a qualified engineering firm to complete a study of the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer System, design an improved plan, and help the city identify funding sources to make immediate needed improvements and long-term solutions to the stormwater issues in the area and declaring an emergency. Please call it over.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donara.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Please have all three readings.
An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with a qualified engineering firm to complete a study of the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer System, design an improvement plan, and help the city identify funding sources to make immediate needed improvements and long-term solutions to the stormwater issues in the area and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with a qualified engineering firm to complete a study of the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer System, design an improvement plan, and help the city identify funding sources to make immediate needed improvements and long-term solutions to the stormwater issues in the area and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with a qualified engineering firm to complete a study of the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer System, design an improvement plan, and help the city identify funding sources to make immediate needed improvements and long-term solutions to the stormwater issues in the area and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brayden.
I'd like to make a motion. Would pass this ordinance?
Mr. Kelch.
I'd like to second.
Second one, Mr. Kelch. Please call it over.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? I think we're.
We discussed out.
We discussed out.
Okay. Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donara.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. J5. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or Safety Service Director to enroll the city of Norwood in the Hamlet County Purchasing Master Bid Service Program. Mr. Gabbard.
I'd like to make a motion that we have all three readings, and actually, let's just do one reading. I'm sorry, one reading, and then that way, people can get an opportunity to do this, one reading tonight.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance, I wanted to kind of co-sign with the mayor on. We attended a seminar at Xavier University, actually back in December, I believe it was. And this is one of the topics that brought up. And what this is, is it allows us, it costs $500, it's like your buy-in. But then, it's with, currently, I think there's 11 other communities in Hamlet County that are a part of this. It allows us to have, like, joint buying. So, we buy things all together instead of just by ourselves. I think this is a rough guess, it's a rough guess, but just in salt savings alone, we would save, like, about $30,000. Office supplies, it would allow us to access to the website to where we could post auction items, such as many of vehicles that we have sitting out in public works right now, you know, and at least get something for these kind of things. So, not only will it help us save a lot of money, but we could actually also, through the auction, bring some money in, and it's only a cost of $500. I think it's well worth it. But I do want to give citizens the opportunity to take a look at this, ask it further questions. And I would also like to go through the chair to the mayor, and ask the mayor if you would like to say anything further on this, since we co-sponsored this.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. The city is already involved in the state bid list, the Ohio State Bid List, for purchasing of vehicles, and they basically go out and do the legal bid work, and then we can purchase that. So, some of the council members recognize that. This system is more of a local effort in that way. So, even down to, like Mr. Gabbard said, office supplies, or in years past, for deicing salt, this, last year, we paid $95 a ton. $95 a ton doesn't seem like much, but then when you start thinking it's, we get 2,000, we get 2,000 tons of deicing salt. With utilizing this service, we can get it for $75 a ton. So, a savings of, say, $35,000 potentially to the city. Well, that's a police cruiser. You know, that's, that's one of the vehicles that we need. That might be, you know, so $35,000 is a good amount of money to save, just by spending the $500 to get active in this. We have a lot of surplus, a ton of surplus equipment and supplies. We have a room downstairs that is totally filled with chairs. So, there's a lot of materials that need to be disposed of. To dispose of public property properly, you have to put it on the action, you have to do that. So, it gives us the ability to do some of that stuff. So, really, it's, it's the ability to get some housekeeping stuff done, and then save some money, that we haven't tried to do in the past. That was one of the things that I'm sure all of us got hit with, as we were trying to run it for office, is how are we going to fix the city's finances? It's, look at every way, shape, and form that we can. I know that last year, there was some disposal of some properties that I think the law director brought to the table, that ended up being, you know, a great bonus for us. So, hopefully, we can get some small bonus out of this type of stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Geraci.
I would suggest three readings tonight on this one. I understand public wanting to know about it, or come and ask questions. But I've seen at least one community benefit from this, just in the two years that I've known them to be in it. And they benefited immensely. It helped their budget to a point that I didn't think it would get to. I know this isn't something critical that we need to pass right away, but I don't see the problem in passing it right away.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gabbard, do you want to?
No, I'd prefer, I, thank you, Mr. President. I still would prefer us not doing everything on an emergency basis and passing everything the first night. I think people do need the opportunity, and this is one, it's not a critical need. It's going to save us a lot, but let's, let's take a look. You know, just if people want to ask questions on it, let's do so. And then in two weeks, we can have second, third reading, and. and be finished.
Any further discussion? The motion is for one reading, for J. 5.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor or safety service director to enroll the city of Norwood in the Hamilton County Purchasing Master Bid Service Program.
We don't have any administration reports this evening. Other requests to address council? We have one, this is Emily Franzen. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Emily Franzen, and I'm at 4207 Forest Avenue. So the business I have is not nearly as pressing, obviously, as the Elm Avenue issues and all the other stuff you guys have talked about, but it is something that is very near and dear to my heart, literally, in this case, since I am wearing a bee sweater. Myself, Councilor Bonzel, and Brandon Reynolds, another beekeeper in the area, are moving to suggest an ordinance amendment to the Norwood rules to allow beekeeping within Norwood's boundaries. So right now, I was here last year, talked about a little bit, but there's new faces here. So to quickly sum up, Norwood does not allow beekeeping within the boundaries of Norwood. Cincinnati does, and since bees fly three to five miles from their hives, and Norwood is not more than three to five miles in diameter, all the bees are already here. There's even a swarm right here. I mean, no, just kidding. I did not bring any bees with me. That would be a good bargaining tool, though. Anyway, so my feeling is that it's not going to really change anything. Honeybees that are, they are domestic animals, they've been domesticated for millions, for thousands of years. We have, in this ordinance, very simple, common sense guidelines, like not putting a beehive right by the sidewalk and getting permission from your neighbors. That, these are, this is an ordinance that the Ohio State Beekeeper Association promotes as something for smaller cities and towns like us to ensure that there's no overstuffing of the area with bees. So Mr. Bonzel has the ordinance already written up. He's run it by the Law Department, Mr. Gary, and, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, I forget you. I know you, I'm sorry. Keith! But yes, he's run it by that, and they've made some amendments. So from my perspective, I feel like it's kind of a pretty easy thing to go to a committee, get it passed maybe here in the next couple of months. Obviously, like I said, not nearly as important as the other stuff you guys have talked about today, and I'm happy to provide an expert opinion for the committee meeting if you need any expertise on that matter. My husband and I do currently have two beehives just outside of Norwood's boundaries on Xavier University's campus. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I just want to thank Emily for coming. So for many Norwood residents know, and the clerk of council I know has been there, but that beehive, she's had open houses there at the hive, and literally, it's just feet, I think, from Norwood City Limits, and it's pretty illuminating. I'm sure you'll probably be willing to do that again this summer.
Yes, that's the plan.
So anyways, at New Business, I will be referring, kind of, to this beekeeping to the Housing Committee, the Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee, so that, you know, we can just have a little talk on it, review the language, see what's going on, and see if we kind of want to refer that to council to pass. So, you know, I'll wait until New Business do that, but definitely just wanted to thank Ms. Franzen for being here and for being so supportive of bees.
Any ones? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't get your name.
Emily Franzen.
Emily, I'm sorry, Emily.
Franzen.
Ms. Franzen, I would like to be the first to go on the books to purchase a jar of Norwood honey.
We have some adjacent to Norwood honey right now, but I guarantee the Norwood honey will be even better.
I want some Norwood honey.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emily.
Pastor Sonny James? Double booty tonight.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, again, in the wonderful, beautiful city of Norwood, Ohio. I just want to start off by saying, about four years ago, during an election process, I took a group of folks during the election process, the campaigning process, and we walked and marched the city of Norwood in bipartisan show of unisonance. And I'm so elated that this is what the vision was. Residents, I want to encourage you, we've had some tough challenges in Norwood, yes we have, but according to the word of God, that we have to give honor to whom honor is due. And to you folks here tonight, first of all, and I know he doesn't ask for this, but I want to say to our newly-elected mayor, my man. Listen, we cannot, as a people, move forward if we continue to stay in the boxes that framed the things that kept us bound as a people. Freedom happens because somebody dares to just think different, but not just the forefathers that go out on the mainstream to fight it. But what we saw tonight, residents, and I know we usually don't throw out names, but to see Councilman Braden say, you know what, I'll amend that motion, and then to see Brother Kelch, he is a brother, an athlete, wrestling, woo-hoo, to say, you know what, I amend that motion. Folks, this is four years ago when I sent out a 13-point plan to the city. This is part of what it should look like. It's okay if we disagree with each other. It's okay if we don't sit on the same side of the fence, but when we can come together and say, we can agree to disagree, but respect each other in the process, that's all I've barked about. That's all my bark and fight and bite has been about. So I'm not going to stand before you, mayor, and threaten to overturn this podium. I'm not, tonight, disappointed at all. In fact, and I don't mean this facetiously or in any negative way, I want to applaud you all, and I'm going to encourage the residents in Norwood that are watching, all of you tonight, to say, good job. And to show that this is genuine, I have had an alp with my brother on this council, and to see Mr. Bonzel, in a nonpartisan way, just speak what is true, doesn't matter what side of the fence he's on. I want to publicly commend you, sir. And I want to ask the residents, if for any reason that I have offended anyone that has served this community, I beg your forgiveness, because all I want is a community diverse, a community that's focused on giving every child, whether they be black, white, Chinese, Hispanic, Portugal, whatever, give them all equal chance to come and to pursue their dreams like each of you have done. I want to commend each and every one of you. Mayor, my man, coming in with fresh boldness, not being confound to just policy. Now, we need policy now, we need order, so we want to continue some of that. But my man, God bless you, God bless this council. I really appreciate you all for being here to serve the citizens of Norwood. And if I can be of any assistance, please call me, 513-487-8843, or email me, pastorsonyjames@gmail.com. I am going to forward my 13-point plan. Prayerfully, you all will take a look at it and continue to gather, strive to make this community great. Great job, Mr. President, tonight. Great job for you all that are brand-new. This was awesome. Keep up the great work. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor James. And thank you for everyone that spoke this evening. Next on the agenda is item M, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? No? I moved on to item N, new business. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to thank again Ms. Franzen for speaking about the bees. I wanted to, you know, I think it's important because, you know, as Norwood, you know, we're a self-sufficient city. It's been tradition, you know. We have our own fire department, you know, we've got our own water towers that need work, our own police force, you know, our own city council, and, you know, the crops and food that are being grown here should also be sufficient, self-sufficient, to be able to have Norwood bees pollinating them and not depending on Cincinnati bees. So with that, I would like to refer the beekeeping, beekeeping, beekeeping in Norwood and the ordinance to the Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee. I've already talked to the chair, Mr. Geraci. I think we're going to try to get a, he's going to try to get a meeting together next Thursday or Friday, so I look forward to that. You know, I think Ms. Franzen's agreed to be there at that meeting so that she can provide, you know, information on it and answer any questions. And then I'll also have, as soon as the draft ordinance is finished, just like a few things, the rough draft ordinance, I mean, again, it's all a draft, but as soon as I can get that finished, and the law department, we can get it updated, I'll just send it out to all of council, just so you all know it and have it, and that way, if you'll have questions or anything before that committee meeting, you know, we can all, you know, we can start to try to address them. So with that, yes, like I said, referring it to the committee. Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else?
Does that need a second?
No.
No.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yeah, I have a few things, but we'll take them one at a time here. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate Pastor James's comments tonight. Coming into this council, I was thrilled, because I truly feel like we have a council here that can work together. We're not always going to agree, but I think that we can be respectful and disagree, you know, agree to disagree at times, because I truly believe that we all here, including the mayor, law director, the auditor, the treasurer, I think we all have what's best for our city at heart. I appreciate the mayor and his aggressiveness, and I know, you know, he's probably a little frustrated that we've, we're trying to restrain a little bit of that, and, but I appreciate that. That's what, we do need that, and we will move, we will move forward aggressively on some of these things. So I would ask, I'd like to go through the chair to the mayor and ask a question if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I understand we just spent about $40,000 on a new gym floor down at the community center, and I've been told I went down twice. I don't know what time they closed down there, if there's anybody down there to even open doors or what. I wanted to take a look at it before tonight, but from what I understand, the grain is going the wrong way. Not that it really matters, it's just a matter of how a gym floor normally looks. That could be wrong, so I just wanted to say, I don't know who is in charge of, and that's before our council, but I don't know if you are aware, of who might have been in charge of supervising the work that goes on down there. So not only for the gym floor, just, you know, who's in charge of that? That's my first question. Who would be in charge of the gym floor, making sure that it was done, done properly, and will be in charge of making sure that our investment is taken care of, and not just anybody coming in with, you know, salty boots and being on that gym floor and scuffing it up?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gabbert, I stopped by there yesterday to look at the floor, but it was all closed up. I don't know, you might have tried to look at it too, Mr. Bonzel, but it's all totally closed up, and it's all urethane, and it smells, you can smell it in there. So I didn't get to look at the grain on the floor, but ultimately, it's the administration's responsibility to make sure that the contract was done properly and that all the work is completed to a standard that's satisfactory before the payment gets made for that work to be done. So, yes, the safety service director will be taking a look at that, and I'll look closely at the grain of the floor.
Mr. Gabbert?
Another question to the mayor, to the chair. A good friend of mine, who's a Norwood resident, has been posting about doing some painting at, like, the fire department and things like that, and I'm just curious as to why we're outsourcing somebody painting, like, interior walls in the firehouse, and, you know, I'm just curious about that. That just seems like we could, we would have internal people and not have to pay outside.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't, I'm not so sure we have people at Public Works that are good interior painters. I think we have 11 guys down there, maybe 10 guys down there right now, and I don't know that any of them are qualified interior paintings, painters. There's a ton of paint work that needs to be done in the city. I've, I'll have to look into that. I quite frankly don't know what the skill set is and which department would do that. I know we have a paint and sign department, but when you talk about painting streets and sidewalks and, you know, crosswalks, and then doing an interior paint job on a building, it's a big difference. So I would think that would be contracted out anyways.
Okay, not that I was trying to knock money out of my buddy's pocket or anything like that, but just, it was a question that, you know...
We've probably got a couple of guys that play gabby.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to place into committee of a whole the topic of traffic around the schools, and with that, I would like the school board members invited, as well as maybe the principals of the school buildings, and also maybe Officer Murphy from the police department. I did have some communicate, I've had several communications from people complaining about the traffic that we have around during pickup time and drop-off time around all of our elementary schools primarily. There is some at the high school, some issues. When I spoke with Officer Murphy, he said that they were trying to work some things out, excuse me, with the schools, with the past superintendent, but with her passing away, that kind of, you know, kind of went by the wayside, and plans weren't implemented. So I would like to, as a first order of trying to build a bridge and a form of communication with the school board, the other big entity in our city, I think that there's other topics that we'll be able to explore with them, but I think that with this council, having conversation with the school board to work on such issues as, and we'll start with traffic for, around the schools, and how that operates and how it should be going, and how that could get communicated to the parents and such. So we, God forbid, we have any incidences like the city has had over the last few years with several kids being hit in school zones and such. So I just want to start that and put that into committee of a whole.
Any other new business? Mr. Gabbert?
Nobody's got anything else? Keep going. I'd like to place into Economic Development Committee the topic of murals. Past councilperson Leslie Stevenson, who spoke about this at the last council meeting of hers, about how they were trying to get some discussion going on that. I know Mr. Bonzel was a part of that, and I would like to place that back into Economic Development to start some communication and some research on murals.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbert. Mr. Geraci?
All right, once again, Mr. Gabbert, thanks for getting my thunder there, as far as the schools. Great comments, by the way. I guess I'd like to ask the Housing Committee members if they would like to set up a meeting tonight, possibly next Friday, the 24th. tonight, possibly next Friday, the 24th.
You think at 6:00?
I would say somewhere around 6:30, 7:00.
6:30 be good.
6:30 then?
Yep.
Okay. So I guess we'll set a Housing Committee meeting on January 24th, 6:30 PM.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I too want to thank you, Mr. Gabbard. I worked pretty close with Norwood View's principal and the Norwood Police Department last year, and we set up some traffic, some traffic guidelines, some flow, restrict the flow going through both sides of the school, and so that's, that's a pretty subject that we really need to look into. So that's, that's a great thing. So I'd like to work with you on that, if you don't mind. Can I go on? Thank you. So going on to the next, Norwood Police Department has hired four new police officers this week, I think, and Robert Towne, Max Murphy, Joe Burley, and Jimmy Strunk. So I'd like to congratulate them and welcome them to Norwood's Police Department, and I wish them well. If I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion to enter into finance the R-AMU contract. Doesn't have to be anything, any, any time, you know, you can, you don't have to set that tonight, if you, it's up to you, but we need to look into that, maybe, maybe look further into that contract that we passed tonight. Few concerns about that. Also, on, on January the 9th, I had an honor of attending my first OKI Regional Government meeting. Very enlightening, and Mr. Tom Carroll, City Manager of Silverton, gave a really neat presentation on how their develop, economic development works over there. They, they took, how they took their zoning and changed their zoning to multi-use, they went from, they changed their zoning for a multi-use zoning, and it was really interesting. So it's really, I look forward to bringing some of that back and then sharing that with you guys at the future meetings. So it was an honor. Thank you for appointing me to that, and I appreciate that. It's, it's an honor, and I look forward to continuing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Dracy?
I'd also like to attempt tonight to set up a Law and Ordnance Committee meeting, if possible, with Mr. Gabbard, Mr. Bonzel, and Mr. Brayden, possibly somewhere around January 30th, about 6:30 PM.
What's in there? Is there anything you'd like to introduce?
What, what I'm looking to do is introduce, if the Law Department can get it together, an ordinance for the street repair and repaving, basically to hold the utility companies accountable for the cuts that they make in the streets.
I'm available. Thursday, the 30th?
Thursday, the 30th, 6:30.
Any other new business? Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also announce that on that new gym floor, and they have assured me that it will be covered with a tarp because we just put a lot of money into that, so they're going to protect the floor. But the class of, Norwood Class of 1989 is hosting a, an adult prom, 80s-themed adult prom, and it's for the Lisa Tanner Scholarship. It'll be for Saturday, January 25th, from 7:00 to 11:00 down there at the community center in the gym. Come dressed as your favorite 80s outfits and wear, whichever. It's only $20, and the money's all going towards the Lisa Tanner Scholarship Fund. It's an incredibly great occasion here. Lisa Tanner was a Norwood alumni. She was a Norwood teacher over at Norwood View, passed away a couple of years ago of breast cancer and is sorely missed, and this is a great way to continue her memory, and so Saturday, January 25th, from 7:00 to 11:00 down at the community center, $20 for the adult prom. Hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've got, so I've heard in the past few weeks, many residents that are concerned about the quality of the repaving that was done on Section Avenue. Just so everybody knows, the city, that was one of the first times ever that the city, or at least in the past memory, that the city paid for repaving work out of the, our street fund essentially, without any other grants or anything else, because we had been using our street fund for streetlights and road salt and just other things that are better suited for the general fund. So that was repaid at a cost of around $180,000. I was just trying to look at some of the finance reports. I don't know if we actually have paid the vendor yet, but I would be curious if we could look at, if we could have the Safety Service Director, maybe, actually, I'm going to catch you. I would like to ask the Clerk of Council to send a letter to the Safety Service Director and copy the mayor to ask them, one, is the condition of Section Avenue consistent with the specifications that were bid out for that? If not, and if so, and if that's the specifications were for the quality that we're seeing, then I'd like to know, I guess, who created those specifications? But if they are not consistent, I'd like to see about what we could do about maybe getting something, some stuff fixed up. So there's some, just various issues with the paving, I don't know if you've been out there or not, they might be willing to just, yeah, so might be willing to just drive it out. So I just want to make sure that we get it fixed, and like I said, if we haven't paid them yet, I very much want to, hopefully, we can hold off on that just for a moment until we can get this evaluation done, because if there is some work they need to do to, to fix it up, then I'd like to see that done before we pay them. So, you know, I don't know if the clerk got all of that perfect. Thank you.
Any other new business?
One last thing.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you. I just wanted to verify, because I actually was a little bit confused at the time, too. I know that we added the 12, 10, 20, 19 minutes to the agenda. Did we actually have a motion to vote on them?
No, we did not. I was going to bring that up. My excitement to get to finances, I skipped right over it, so forgive me.
Okay. I will defer, perfect, I will defer to you when you're ready to do that.
Okay. Any other new business? Mr. Gabbard.
Mr. President, I just want to commend you on your first meeting. You've done a good job, and that's a tough spot to be in, to know when to, who to point and who to take first and seconds on, and when you're allowed to talk, and, you know, we, we missed an item tonight, and if that's the worst that happens in your tenure, then, you know, we're, we're in great shape, so I just want to say, I thought you've done a great job tonight.
I'm sure it's going to get much easier from here. This is probably a pretty difficult first meeting. Mr. Moore had said to me earlier, I think we skipped over Item F, and I told him, no, we didn't, so he was, after I started thinking about it, I said, he's, he's absolutely correct. So, thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Mr. Kelsch?
While we're at it, I might as well just go ahead before my date gets taken. Since I got everybody here, I would like to schedule a Parks Recovery and Public Spaces meeting. The date that I'm really looking at is Wednesday, the 22nd of January.
What time?
Just call it 6:30.
I can't attend, I've got class that night.
What's a better date for you?
Any date other than Wednesday?
Let me look.
Unless you want to do it during the daytime.
Can't do that. Well, Monday, the 27th. Monday, the 27th, 6:30?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Thompson? Monday, January 27th, 6:30.
Well, moving on, let's, let's go back to Item F that I skipped over, forgive me. Item F, the minutes of the previous meeting, December 10th, 2019 minutes. Mr. Brayden?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the minutes as written.
Mr. Dracy?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dracy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Now we will move on to Item O, Communications. Number one, a letter from the City Auditor.
Dear Council members, this letter is to let you know that the December monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on January 6th. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Mr. Bonzel?
I move that we receive and file the letter.
Mr. Bonzel? Second by Mr. Dracy. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So just wanted to provide some insight into why this is here. The, when I took over as Finance Chair two years ago, we started sending the reports out to every council member, like these, the, you'll get them every, just basically the financial reports for the city that come out, so it's probably, if you print them all out, it's probably like 200 pages, but, you know, once we did the report on accounting method, essentially, the Financial Recovery Commission and the financial supervisors did this investigation into the city, into all of these different accounting, all different processes that we have at the city, they recommended that council affirm at each meeting that we did, in fact, receive the reports. You're not affirming that you, you read them or whatever, but you're just affirming that we received them so that it's in the record, and so by, so the way that the city or the Auditor's Office has decided to do that is just to send us a letter each month, so you can just expect once a month to get that letter, and that was just based on a recommendation from the financial supervisors through their report on accounting methods.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Communication O2, a letter from Mayor Schneider regarding, regarding the mayor's court files for December 2019.
January 7th, 2020, to Ken Miracle, President, and members of Norwood City Council. Dear President and members of council, enclosed please find the report from mayor's, excuse me, Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of December 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me or contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Mr. Thompson, second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, and motion passes, 7, 7:0. Item O3, letter from the Law Director regarding Law Director's 2019 Annual Report.
Dear members of council, attached, excuse me, January 10th of 2020. Dear members of council, attached please find the Law Director's annual report as required by Ohio Revised Code, Section 733.62, reporting to council the activities of the Law Department in 2019. I would like to address council at your January 14th, 2020 meeting to offer some comments and save the clerk the need to read the report in full. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Keith Moore, Law Director.
We got to make a motion.
Mr. Gabbard?
I make a motion that we receive and file and give the Law Director the ample time to share.
Second by Mr. Kelsch. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Mr. Moore?
Well, thank you. I was kind of, sort of hoping that everybody would vote no so we could go home since it's quarter after 10:00, but there were a couple of things I wanted to mention. It's, I, I understand this report is long, and reading through it to like, see what has changed from last year is, is kind of boring. It's, it was an effort to capture, to at least touch on the bulk of the things that passed through the Law Department. The details on some of the things that have come have been simply amazing. It, it's, it's a very strange situation. There's 100 different kinds of issues that can walk in the door at any day that have nothing to do with each other. The one thing over the last year I wanted to talk about, because I'm just so happy about it, Mayor Schneider mentioned it briefly, was the, the city-owned properties. My first week as Law Director, four years ago, I got a call, hey, can we meet with the, that we had two relatively new housing inspectors in, they want to meet with us. I'm like, okay, so I came in and we sat down and we had a meeting. There was a house up on Section, and there were people living in there that, they'd been trying to get it in a decent shape, but it just wasn't working, and the building department was going to declare the property inhabitable and vacated. They went to the auditors, the county auditor's website, and they discovered the city actually owned the house. So this is one that was, went up for tax foreclosure, and these, this poor couple got scammed. They'd been writing mortgage checks or purchase contract checks to somebody in New Jersey for a year and a half. They didn't actually own the house. But that was my first inkling that we had these houses, we had these properties out there, and then right after that was, every six months, you get a letter, the, the, the city auditor would send a letter to the Law Department saying, here's the property tax bills, which one should we pay? And I'm like, why wouldn't we pay? Either they're all exempt, or why would we not pay? And it turned out that, well, we had all these properties that we'd acquired, but, and didn't think they should be taxable, they should be exempt. There's a process. So I'm like, oh, we never filed these up. So I went down and filed exemptions, the exemption applications, and they kicked them back, saying, no, you can't get an exemption, you can't file this until you pay off the back taxes. And it turns out, when we got these properties, the prior taxes didn't go away. So we had that, and we spent, I don't know, two years trying to go through fiscal, because we were headed right into fiscal emergency at that point, and it was two years to find the space in the budget to pay off the back taxes so we could file the exemption so we could do something with them, because we met with, with auctioneers, and they're, well, there's no way, okay, in theory, you can auction these off and get enough to cover what you owe in the back taxes, but nobody's going to bid on that. I'm like, okay, you're right. And the state auditor said, no, you can't do that, we got to pay them off. So we did manage finally to get the taxes paid off and got the exemptions filed, got refunds for the three previous years, and did finally auction them off. So for me, it's a huge win because I don't have that nightmare hanging on the back of my head, even if we didn't see a dime out of it, but we did. The city recovered $250-some thousand in addition to the $60,000 refund. So for me, you talk about government, that was a four-year, almost a four-year process, and it just shouldn't be that hard, but some things just are. I also want to, I just want to take this, this time to thank Tim Gary, the Assistant Law Director, and Tim Brown, everybody knows as T.A. Brown, the Law Department Secretary. We have an interesting situation. He spends only 25, 30% of his time on the Law Department stuff, and a lot of that includes working with other departments, the clerk's office, the mayor's office, to get some of the paperwork and the recording things, and the advertising and notices and that kind of thing taken out. Most of the rest of the time, he's the city's IT guy, so he does all of the tech work in the city. So they're two amazing individuals. They're vastly overqualified for the jobs they have and for what they're making. They have incredible spirits and a willingness to drop everything, I think Mr. Gabbard had a little sense of that today, and try to solve whatever problems come in. So I'm, I'm eternally grateful for them. There's no way we could function the way we do without that. I did also, in light of the discussion earlier tonight about the, just kind of my, I've not been to a Fiscal Recovery Commission meeting, I have seen it, kind of seen the process from a distance, and I've watched it go through here, but just, I, I think some context may help for people at home and maybe for a couple of the people in this room, that the idea is that, that the city has a, has put together a budget, and it's a five-year, essentially a five-year budget. This is how much goes into the Police Department administrative, this is how much you're going to spend on that, and this is how much you're going to spend on public lands and buildings, and this is how much you're going to send, spend on the Law Department, and those numbers are in there. Now, the way the city's budget normally works, if there's something we have to change, the next council meeting, council can amend the budget, and we can do that. Now we can't. The basic process is, no, you put this in here, you're not allowed to spend any more than what you put in for that key. And you're not allowed to do anything that's going to make you spend more than, is in that key. If you want to spend more than, than is in that key, you have to pass a new plan. The mayor's got to present a new plan to council, the council then passes, that then goes to the Oversight Committee, which the formal name I can never remember, and then they may or may not allow you to do that, which is why it took almost two years to pay off, I think it was like $120,000 in back taxes. I mean, seriously, it took that, we had one that was, it's for another parcel, we just needed to get this for its commercial, it should all be a wash in the city's budget once it's resolved. But that was, we needed an agreement to make a $5,000 installment payment, and that took two months to get their approval so that we could enter an agreement to write a check for $5,000 so we could move forward on an exemption application that is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. That's kind of the way the process is. It's incredibly difficult, and so different things might work in different ways. So it's a question of, when we're talking about like the mayor's, the positions in the mayor's key, there's less room there than there would be in other department, other bigger departments. And there may be different, but, but part of this also is working with Anna Mary and April. April, April and Anna, always the same, too, on what can we fudge and what can we not fudge, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, and sometimes that's a very tough thing to do. And so it's a difficult process, and I just want to like let everybody just put it out there that it's, it's, it can be incredibly difficult and time-consuming and frustrating, and so the sooner we're out of it, the better, absolutely no question. But that, you know, the better communication we have with the state auditor, the better, because if this comes out the way we don't want it to in a couple of weeks, it's going to be, we got to amend the whole plan before we're going to get anything done. So it, it's a difficult process. It's one of those things that you shouldn't have to deal with, but it's one of the things we do at this point. So I don't know. Sometimes it's hard to be the law director or be a council member, because there's a lot of times I want to raise my hand, hey, wait a minute, I got something to say about that, but I, I don't get to talk unless somebody asks me to. So that was the one thing I just thought would be helpful in the broader sense. So I just, I also want to make the point that the law department represents the city as a whole. So we don't represent the mayor, we don't represent council, we don't represent individual council members. As a general rule, there may be things where the, the police department gets sued, then we represent the police department, but it's on behalf of the city. So we're here, whether we agree with a policy or we disagree with a policy, our job is to get that policy carried out in the most effective way and the way least likely to get us all in trouble. And so we really do make an effort to stay out of the policy side. We may mention things to people, preferably behind the scenes. This may be a concern you want to think about, but, but just if you see anybody, if you see me, if you see Tim or TA, like saying, in any way, jumping out and saying, oh, I think that side is stupid, and this side, that's, that's not our job, and if you see me doing it, call me on it, because that's not my job. And we really try to represent the city as a whole, and we're here to work for you. So if you have, anybody has any questions about things, there's a lot of knowledge. Between the three of us, one of us probably knows the answer to a lot of things. So if you have questions, if you have concerns, feel free to contact us.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bonzel?
Is there a time for a question now, do you think?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much. So I just, before I ask the question, first just want to encourage all council members to read the report. There's actually quite a bit of information in here, specifically the very bottom of the first page, they talk about the Virgil case, that I think we could all learn some lessons from. And just real quick, the Virgil case is just one where council in, a council in the city administration in '87, '88 did not have liability, did not have insurance to cover civil rights claims or some kind of liability insurance that they needed, and we're, and the city is defending a claim from that long ago, 30-something years ago, and spending hundreds and hundreds of hours doing that while they're trying to do their, their day job. And, you know, I don't, it's extremely frustrating that you all are having to pay for mistakes like that in the past, but I appreciate you all doing that. My question, though, are we in, are we, is there a conclusion to this? Are we done with it yet? Is there?
No, we're not. I expect there may be three or four more depositions, possibly. I was talking to Mayor Schneider, informing him, actually, today I got a notice that they want to depose, the plaintiff's wanted to depose one of the prosecutors from Newport who brought a new indictment after this gentleman was released from prison, or brought it, brought a new, went in front of the, the grand jury again, and they want to, they wanted to depose her, and they don't want to be deposed, so they filed a motion to suppress the subpoena, and the, and the judge, the magistrate has just today taken that under advisement, and that, just that process has been going on for a year. So, yeah, no, it's, it's, I'm going to say this spring at some point, discovery will hopefully be closed, and we'll be filing a summary judgment motion, and it should be thrown out, I hope, because if it's not, we have to go through the whole trial, and there's really no, basically, it's Northern Kentucky, the police in Northern Kentucky investigated and convicted a gentleman who was released from prison 27 years later after DNA testing. His DNA did not match what was on the crime scene. There are allegations of misconduct. We got dragged in along with Cincinnati because there was a meeting, there's notes of a meeting between Cincinnati, Newport, and Norwood because there had been somewhat kind of stab, like stabbing murders within that window. And so they got together to compare notes. Actually, recently, there was mention of a similar case in St. Bernard, and so I'm just, I wonder whether the plaintiff is going to try to drag them in as well. So we have no business being in that, but, but we're stuck with it. So hopefully that will go away, too, in which case all of my major problems will be gone, and I'll just, I guess I'll just quit at that point, because it'll fix everything.
We'll, we'll find some ordinance this quarter, so, thank you.
Anything else? Move on to item P, excuse the absence members, all members are present. Item Q?
I still have that O four.
Like I said, item P, all members are present. Item Q, adjournment? Mr. Gabbard?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Mr. Dracy?
Second.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch?
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo?
Yes.